We have a quorum, the general is properly passed properly?
Yes.
Pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public appearances. First be Jennifer.
Yeah. Okay, so time, three minutes. I didn't want to have to do this because it sounds preachy, but I'm going to speak to you as a resident of Pottage Grove, and what I would want from the board that is representing me is seven people that are looking to build collaboration in that argument. Constructive argument is fine, but this is not Washington DC, this is the village of Pottage Grove. We need to be, we need to conduct ourselves in the manner that best suits serving the people that elected us, and all seven, all seven of us were elected to this position. And I truly believe that all seven of us, despite personal differences whatever, have the best interests of the people of this village at heart. I hope that you will conduct yourselves, including myself in this, in that manner. We are not always going to agree, but if we set ourselves up to argue, we will get nothing done, and I, that's not something I want to be a part of. So please, don't squabble, we are not children.
Let's see, public presenters?
That'll be under...
Presentations?
Yep.
Under, yeah, under the park.
Yeah, under parks.
Mm-hmm. Do you want to go?
Next we had discussed and considered the minutes of the regular meeting of the village...
If I wanted to speak?
You're later.
You're going to be under the parks.
Thank you.
One, yep. Nope, that's fine. Minutes of the regular meeting on the village board for May 18th, 2015.
Washington Grove, the minutes of the presentation.
Second. I just would make a comment in general, Thursday, maybe, has a staff panel, and one of the things that, where we each talked about our different areas, and one of the things I mentioned was, in the minutes, just to remind everybody to make sure that you do look through these and that, try to be more towards content and make sure that your motion or discussion is summarized correctly, because what invariably happens is two years from now, someone says, "Well, what happened at that meeting?" And I go, "Oh, I know what happened," and then I go back and I look at the minutes and doesn't really say that. So I just would, you know, again, urge everybody to make sure that they give this, give the minutes a good review.
That being said, on number two, we can, we can scratch, roll call was taken, as we did miss that last meeting, so I'd like to have amendment on that one.
Don't I kind of have to have that in there to know who's at the meeting?
But we didn't actually do it.
Yeah, it says right below, who was at the meeting?
Who was, did you have a sign in?
Excuse me?
No, we just didn't take it.
I can just take this sentence off, roll call was taken?
Yeah.
And then just save the record as it?
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
We didn't do it tonight either.
Oh, yeah.
Not specifically?
We'll do that next.
I had a question on six A and B. Says kind of a vague, questions from the board, should we put the questions under six A and six B that were given and the answers given? I mean, I remember asking kind of other places to, to put our money, and they answered that. I think it'd be good to be under six B.
I mean, it would be interesting to see for the record, the $15,000 roll, right? Stuff like that.
Yeah, yeah, I was asking just other opportunities.
Some more details of the presentation?
Yeah. Instead of just saying questions from the board, like what were the questions and what were the answers, I guess, just for record.
Unless those presentations are attached. Is that possible, Lee, to attach?
It could, but generally what we do is we reference, we reference them, but it is, we say, you know, such was handed out, was made part of the record.
So we could have that on?
I don't put that in the minutes, but it, it's actually in the packet that's saved forever. So whatever's handed out that night is added into the packet that you see, and then those are kept.
And it should be on the CD too, right?
Video record.
And yes, it's on video, DVD.
I just think it's saying questions from the board, if, we should put the questions and answers in there for the record. And then also, I believe thirteen was voted, one was voted to not come out in the session.
To come out?
Yeah.
Do you know who?
I think it was Ed.
Yeah, I think it was me.
Oh, I didn't take you seriously, because you were... Okay.
Wait till you see what I got for you later. Yeah, on the, on the, I get your point, Kyle, on the questions, you, you just want to put in there, I mean, you'd have to, we'd have to kind of stop everything and write the questions down and write down the answers, and I mean, it can be a bit time consuming. I mean, just once you refer to the...
Well, we did, it's no different than seven A where, you know, Jennifer asked a question, it was real simple, let's put it in there, so.
Yeah.
Suggest you're giving that direction, table the minutes, and she can come, come at, we can use next time. Yeah, you can always table the minutes.
Are you going to amend your motion, or?
Just with our draft motion.
So will you then be going to look at the video?
Yep, yep.
And write down, okay. I mean, okay, so all the discussion, I mean, back and forth?
Are you looking for verbatim, or just the general questions?
No, there's just, yeah, like yours is summarized here, that's, those simple questions and answers.
Kyle asked about other investment options?
Yeah.
And Mark gave them?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, because then two years later, we're not going to go watch those tapes.
Right.
We're going to go to the minutes and say, "Hey, look at this," you know, take credit for what we did quickly and easily.
Well, you could, and actually, Alex, that's one of the, I've been a silent pusher of the getting better equipment, because going back and looking at the tapes from several years ago is pretty much an impossibility, because, you know, you can't hear anything, and people's voice is like this, and so it's, it's important that, that, you know, I mean, I think that creating the written record is a good idea, and Deb, if you can, you know, do a summary, and then if there were further questions, they'd be able to actually go to the CDs, because those, we always, we never throw those out.
Administratively on the, on the audio, if there is, our awesome guys in the back, if there is audio issues, I would have no issues if he came up and tapped me on the shoulder and told me to speak up.
I watched, I watched the cable show, and I see how it is. I had trouble hearing Pat last time, but other than that, everybody's real audible. With these new microphones and stuff?
Yeah, I gotta be careful where I put stuff.
And the cameras are as good as they're going to get, you know, with, with the current cameras we have, which, which are actually pretty good, so I do watch the, the meetings from time to time, just to see how they're coming across, and since we got the new equipment, it is a lot better, so there's no question about that.
So I'll watch the DVD, and then if you want to table it, we need a motion to table on them. Motion to.
The second.
Any more discussion?
Oh, just, can I have some discussion?
Let's see.
Just, I, I just don't want this to be something that is taking up an exorbitant amount, I totally agree with you that, you know, maybe more details specifically about our financial, questions from the board are, are a good idea to have in there, but I don't, I don't want it to be like 12 pages long.
I mean, it's question and answer, the opinion stays on it, so it's like...
I'm thinking I'm understanding you, but I just wanted to...
Like I referred to seven A where you asked your question, it was one sentence, and then you got an answer, one sentence, that's what I'm kind of envisioning.
Okay.
Any more discussion? Any more to the table, on second, on favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, number seven, or six, any presentations of the board?
No.
Number seven, unfinished business, seven A, discuss proposed date of June 20th at 5:30 PM from open house to tour the municipal services building and meet the new police chief, Dan Labor, and the new director of public works, J.J. Larson, Matt?
Yes. There are not any scheduled meetings on the 29th, any village meetings, and we're looking for open dates, so I guess we're just looking for some feedback, if that date would work for most. You wouldn't, you wouldn't all necessarily have to be there, it would just be open to the public for a chance to see the new facility and, and to meet the new staff.
You just got to pick a date and whatever it is, it's certainly perfect for everybody, so.
Okay. Okay.
Seven B, discuss examples of accounts payable reports currently available from the general ledger software.
If you look at the examples I put in there, example one is the one that we currently have, so it has the account numbers, and the feedback that we got was that we didn't want account numbers in there, so example two is the same thing, just lists it by invoice, not by invoice and then account number. Example three is the same, pretty much as example two, but it does have account number on the side, and then the last one is just input order, not alphabetical order.
So this is just rearranging within the software that we have?
But these are the four canned options that are available. If you want something differently, it will cost us programming time.
So is, is example two just one page?
No, it's just a portion of it.
Okay.
Example four, if I look at it, sorry, it's the summary by...
Input order.
Input.
So she doesn't input them alphabetically, she inputs them as she gets them.
Okay, but it's also group, like I see the postmaster, they're grouped together.
So is example three?
On example four, but then the, the second page of example four actually shows the account codes for that period.
Yep.
For the spend, so I mean, that's kind of a nice summary where you can see, grouped together, we're spending this much money on postage, you know, like, like Matt's is a good example, they're distributed against six different departments, you'll see it as one invoice, I'm guessing is my interpretation, but then also at the end, you'll get this nice summary where you see all the account codes that got hit during that budget period. Is that the correct interpretation of example four?
My question would be, is there one that's easier to run, easier to, for you to produce, or?
The thing we were talking about is the not having the account numbers on there, because we're not putting the receipts into those account numbers, we're just passing the receipts. So I would lean more towards number two, because it doesn't really get into the account numbers, which isn't really our position of what we're passing through, which is the documents and the receipts.
I guess the only thing I've been looking at in the accounts is when we're overrunning budget codes, how do you tell, and then how do you take a corrective action? It's not a negative thing that you're overrunning accounts, you got, you got to, you got to spend money to do business, it's fine, but when you've allotted money and then you've overrun, how do you notice you're not keeping track, so?
But what's tough is it can switch, so you have to literally ask for those.
Yeah, or keep writing it down.
I would agree that example two is probably the simplest in terms of actual, just a list of invoices to be paid, or, you know, getting paid.
I don't have a presence, what other words could I use?
I think if we were approving what accounts they would go into, I would lean towards four, but we're not, so I think I lean towards two.
Does that create any issues later with the, nothing? I mean, it, it doesn't matter to me the way, I mean, I was, I was fine with it the way it is, I'm fine with it the way you guys want to change it, the, the proof, I think, is in the pudding, and that's in the audit, and, because if the question is, we're not putting it into the right account, it simply gets put into that proper position later on, so if the semantics of saying it's attached to this account is incorrect, if that's the issue, what's the solution? Number two?
Yeah, because it's like, we're not, we're not looking at accounts, so why even have the account information on there, basically, is, yeah.
Okay.
And you can still run your reports here, waiting for you, right?
Yeah.
As long as it's not an occurrence on death, and it gives you what you want, I...
It just cleans it up, doesn't it?
Yeah, but, but the second question is, it's not going to create a problem later, where we say, oh, we all of a sudden in unassigned funds, or this, this, we have this huge debt account that we don't know where anything goes because it wasn't assigned.
This is just a report that's canned out of the system, so, I mean, it's going to go into the system, however they enter it into the system, and then they generate a report based on those entries, so.
Okay.
So it's going to go into the system like, to whatever account they put it into.
Okay.
So the report that we get back out can take any one of these forms, so.
Okay, so really nothing changes except for what we're seeing?
Correct.
Is that accurate? It's just the layout, yeah.
Then I'm fine, whatever you guys want.
So option two?
Option two, I guess is...
Yep, I'm going with option two.
Motion to approve option two for future ledger reports? Is that what we're looking for?
First, and second, on option number two for the council payable, any other discussion? And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Seven C, discuss, consider motion reconsider citizens appointments to committees made at the May 18th, 2015 village board meeting.
I requested this item beyond the agenda, and so I will go ahead and make a motion to reconsider citizen appointments to committees made at the, at the May 18th village board meeting.
Second.
Motion to discuss, consider motion reconsider citizens appointments to committees made at the May 18th, 2015 village board meeting, any other discussion?
I, I led some discussion.
Well, it's going to be, that's why I have to hear the discussion.
I, I was the second trustee on this, I sent that, included you in that email. For the, the main purpose that I thought this was, was worthwhile was because it happened so fast, and I think that, you know, transparency and discussion is always better, so that's why I was on board with this. It's not necessarily a, a challenge, but more, let's have some discussion, because there were a lot of changes made.
Yeah, things were happening so fast, and, and to, you know, I think, taking the time after the meeting to go back and look at it, we, we all kind of failed in our effort to do better, and the logical thing would have been to table those so that we had time to think about it, maybe ask a few questions, and so, so that's, that's the reason why I requested that this item be on the agenda for this evening.
So what is it, I guess, I don't understand what you said. Sorry. Is there new evidence, is there some other information that, that leads you to believe you made the wrong decision, now that you've had two weeks to look back?
That's, that's the problem.
You haven't looked back in the past two weeks?
Well, that's the problem, we haven't received any information. We'd, for, for those new appointees to the committees, we haven't received anything other than their names.
Is it typical of, I mean, I, there's been a lot of instances where things get rushed and approved.
This is true, but...
And it's not, and so, you know, I, I trust that the committees are doing their job in recommending things appropriately, I do my best to read everything, the committee forwards it for approval, it gets a good hard look, I trust that the homework was done.
The...
And I, I did research a few people after the fact, and I, I found no new evidence that would require me to potentially rethink any of the decisions I've made so far.
I'm really super surprised to hear you say that, Alex.
Okay.
Because you campaigned so, so much, and even before the campaign, about trust and transparency and discussion.
Sure.
So I would assume that you would be all for this.
I'm, look, what I'm looking for is, I have no issues with the discussion, what I'm looking for is evidence that you've seen in the past two weeks that is making you question your decision, and rather, because really what you're doing is, you're bringing it up, and you're looking to table the decision that you already made for an additional two weeks, which really slows us down in the end.
No, Alex, what, this, this particular motion is to be able to discuss those items, you know, to, to go back and discuss those items, we can't discuss...
Your, your motion is to discuss and reconsider, not a motion to discuss. So you're questioning your decision?
We can't reconsider until...
I hope everybody got a chance to look at the email that I sent, and, so the first question is, should there be a motion to reconsider? If it's, if there's an affirmative vote, then you go on to a discussion of that matter at, on seven E, and then when you take up seven D, then again, you decide, should that matter be re-discussed and if you, or reconsidered, and if you say yes to that, then the discussion of the merits is found in section, is found on seven F. Most of the time, on a motion for reconsideration, someone makes a motion, and then it is voted on, and then if it's approved, it's then tabled until the next meeting, it's not actually shown on the agenda, that's the only, only way you can probably go to meetings, though.
So we just need to, we should not be discussing this?
Well, I mean, you can discuss the general merits of, of whether you ought to reconsider, reconsider that, that action, but the actual individuals involved ought to wait until you make that decision whether to reconsider them or not.
See, the, the, two weeks ago, when we, when we were looking at these, we didn't have like a short summary of, of what these individuals bring to the table.
And planning commission was, there's almost a complete turnover on planning commission.
The, so, so, in hindsight, in trying to do better to serve the citizens, I felt it imperative that we reopen, be able to reopen the discussion about the appointments, and we can't do that without this, this current discussion.
Call question?
Unless there's a compelling reason, that there's some sort of evidence that a bad decision was made.
I'm not saying it was a bad decision, I'm just saying we should have taken more time to make that decision.
We've been talking for three weeks about how the ledger should appear in the, in the minutes, so I don't, I don't have a problem with the motion.
I call a question. I'm sorry, did you have some?
Not sure we're done.
I, I'd like to take a vote, because I think we're working into what Lee told us we're not supposed to be doing.
Okay.
I guess I have several questions, what, if this does get tabled, what does that mean for board review?
It, it doesn't get tabled, if you vote aye on the motion, it means that the citizen appointments that were made last time are, are back on the table for discussion, and then, then you move on to seven, after you get done with seven D, you move on to seven E, and, and so potentially, you still could approve citizens tonight for, for these, for these committees or commissions.
So that's when we have this conversation that we've already kind of started having?
Yeah.
If they hadn't reviewed them, they would be approved tonight.
You're back in the same situation.
You, you wouldn't have to.
Okay.
You wouldn't have to, and just, I, I'm not sure if, if this means, I'm being a little anal about this, which wouldn't surprise me in the slightest, but I think this involves at most eight people, maybe 10, depending upon, there were a couple people that I think told Pat they didn't want to continue, and so they were replaced, and I wasn't quite sure of the answer to that, so I just, I took committee assignment sheet that I had from February of this year, and I compared it to the one that Pat passed out, so I think you're, we're talking about potentially eight to 10 people.
I guess, Lee, the question is, is that, what's the process? Is it, is there supposed to be bios on citizens to get on committees?
There is no process.
Or, it's an open-ended process, so there's really...
Correct, there have been times that bios and extensive bios have been presented, other times it's just a list of people.
And from my experience, the past four years, Diane was president our four, four years, so that's my only experience with village president until now, she would kind of give us a little spiel, and we would, we would have conversations beforehand, what do you think, do you have any thoughts, like she, like for parks, if there was an opening on parks, she would ask me what I would think of, who she was thinking of, so we kind of got a feel for what, what, what the person brought to the table. I mean, that's how Diane did it, that's my only experience, so that's what I'm used to, that doesn't mean that's how it has to be, but I think because this, because we got, I mean, I literally got it right before we said the pledge, so I didn't even, honestly, I didn't even have time to look at the citizen appointments.
And it was right before we voted, it was during the...
Why don't we table it at that time?
We should have.
We should have.
We should have.
And that's what I'm trying to do, is to go back and correct that error that we made by not tabling it.
Okay.
My, my only last comment is, this is regardless of the topic, you know, last month, last week we approved something, and we used our, our best decisions, I do my homework before the meeting, as we all do, and review all the documents to the best of my ability, and I, I spend hours every night on this, regardless if it's this topic or some other topic, unless there's some sort of compelling evidence that we made a bad decision, going back is, going backwards and not moving forward. I do understand, I understand the statement, but please understand and respect mine as well.
No.
Yes, hindsight's always 20/20, could you have done something better, could you have not spent that money here, could you have not rushed this project and overrun, I mean, there's always, there's always that, but unless there's compelling evidence that some sort of, I guess, harm was done, which I'm still not seeing, you know, I just don't see why we're going back on this.
That's kind of why I asked the process, because it's like, is Pat supposed to assign these people, or is the village board supposed to control what goes on in his committee?
Pat nominates all these people, and then, but they have to be approved by the village board.
Right, so they're basically asking the village board if there's evidence or information here of why that individual wouldn't be on that committee, correct?
I guess the village board has to give, I want to go back to your earlier question, which was about process, there, there hasn't been a process, and, and I don't, and I think that it would make sense that as you go through these each year, and you get people that get added, then, you know, you get, get some bio, get some background on, on things. It's, the last time we probably had this many people that kind of got changed was in 2009, when Scott Norton took over, and then, and that lasted three or four months, and then Mike Michelson took over, and so there were, it was a little bit more gradual, but...
So who do you speak to about firming up that process for the future?
I think that, I think that that would be something that the village board may say they want the ordinance committee to review and to make recommendations on, or the board could make recommendations on, okay, this, you know, we want our process to be the following.
And it should be documented in ordinance, there, the process now, if the president nominates, the board approves, that's the process, we follow the process as it's been described, and again, it tells through some evidence that says we violated the process, or there's evidence that says we made a bad decision, not a rush to shiz, not a rush to shiz. That's, that's what I'm looking for.
I think that's your opinion.
The, 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 there are several things I would like to say, but I feel like they're more, more appropriate in E or F than right now, so.
And I called the question.
And, and Jennifer did call a question.
Violated my own calling of the questions.
That's, that doesn't end the discussion if there's still discussion.
Call question.
Pat, is it your direction for her to read the motion at this point, or do you want further discussion?
Yeah, I'm done discussing.
Okay.
So the question and motion on the table is to reconsider trustee appointment, I'm sorry, citizen appointments to committees made at the May 18th, 2015 village board meeting.
They're welcome.
Sure.
Let's mix it up, stay with Jack.
Aye.
Now you can just give me, Alex?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Jennifer?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Abstein?
Pat?
No.
So, motion passes for to...
Okay, we take up four, or seven D next, and we know we'll take up seven E after that.
Seven D is discussed, consider motion to reconsider trustee appointment to the plan commission made at the May 18th, 2015 village board meeting.
Again, this is one that I, I requested to be on, and it was, at that point in time, it was a situation where I was looking toward working together and working, and I still want to work together, but don't get me wrong, but I was, I was just not going, I knew there were other things that would be important, and, but as I got home and thought about it, I began to think that with, and I was adding in the citizen appointments, I thought it was important to have the experience of a veteran on the, a veteran trustee on the plan commission. So I, that's why I included this request on, for the agenda item, because I, I felt the experience of a, of a veteran trustee was important.
Did you make a motion?
I would make a motion to reconsider trustee appointment to plan commission made at the May 18th village board meeting.
And I was the trustee that agreed to have this put on the agenda, because I think it's worth the discussion, so I will second that.
All right, motion, a second, discuss, consider a motion to reconsider trustee appointment to the plan commission made at the May 18th, 2015 village board meeting. All in favor? We talk about later, I thought.
Yeah, we talk, we, we can generally discuss the idea of making the, making the motion, Alex, and then the specifics of the motion would be discussed on, again, F, if it reaches that part.
So the compelling evidence to review this is, you have seniority, and you weren't chosen.
No.
So Kyle's a bad choice?
No, that's not what I'm saying at all. I'm just saying that, you know, my viewpoint changed when I got home, and this is, making this motion is the way to try to change that. That's all it is. Nothing to do with Kyle or I necessarily, other than the experience that I mentioned earlier, but the, I think, service to the village is better served with a veteran than, than, than somebody just coming on.
Okay, so Kyle's not called?
No, that's not what I said. I said...
You're more called.
I said, I'm a veteran of the process and, and have, have...
I want to vote for you, I need something here. I want to vote for you. Trying to get it out of you.
When, when did you go on planning? What year?
2013.
Do you have any experience?
Not specifically with planning.
Okay.
But I wasn't totally new to the, to the process either. And again, there's more to say on the, on the secondary item.
Was there indication that you would remain on the committee?
There's more to say in the secondary item.
So a motion and a second roll call?
Alex. They like to screw me up on it. Alex.
No.
Do we, do we start at different?
Yeah, mix it up.
I'm sorry, do you want me to read the question again?
Sure.
The motion...
No, no, I mean, are we supposed to start at different places every time?
I'll pay an S P two.
Is that, is that like an open meeting center somewhere?
No, it's not, no, but it's, it's usual, it's, I actually, actually there was a, actually I can remember sitting down and doing it by hand with, with someone in a different municipality, where we said, okay, we're going to take the seven people and, or the six people, we're on the city council, and we, and we just kept changing the names. So that's, that, that is, it's rare that we always start at one and then go to the other.
I didn't want it. Thank you. So, so I, I vote to reconsider. So I guess that would be an aye. Just want to make sure that gets...
Harvey.
Aye.
Nate.
Jeff.
Aye.
Pat.
No.
Motion carries forty-three.
All right, seven D, discuss and consider citizen appointments to village committees.
Okay, I, I don't pretend that, or guarantee that this is completely accurate, but I think it is, so I'll just go through the names. I don't think that there were any changes to citizens on ad hoc, architectural, border review, CDA, deer grow EMS, but Pat, one thing I, I just wanted to mention is, there are actually two trustees, I think, or these two people that the village appoints to EMS, and it's not in the, it's not in the code, but it is in the agreement that was signed between deer grow, deer field and the town and village. So that's something to keep in mind for a future appointment in terms of...
Well, seven nine, that's it.
Yeah, Pat's on.
You're, you're on there, but there's supposed to be another, and you've carried over?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, well then...
Can we, can we start with parks, since that one's going to be super easy? Steve didn't want to be on it anymore, and we're perfectly happy with Kevin.
Okay. John, Mr. Goulding did not want to be on, right? Pat of Ethics.
Yes, right.
So he was replaced by Mike Raizeback?
Yes, we're, we're in Ethics now?
Laura Brown, Parks and Rec.
Oh, just, Kevin was the only one. And he's incredibly qualified.
So...
We're getting...
Kevin's replacing...
Can we just go on the order twelve one?
Yeah, that would be best.
Yeah, that's why, okay, so ad hoc, architectural, non, border review, non, CDA, non, this is as far as citizens are concerned.
Let's go, let's go on in order, twelve one is ad hoc, so that one's fine, correct?
Yes.
Twelve two is Parks and Rec. Do we have Kevin Loffenberger replacing Steve?
Yeah, Kevin is incredibly qualified, Steve did not want to be in the committee anymore.
Is there, I guess my question for you, is there any issue with, in terms of Steve's background in forestry and...
I, I don't know, I, I heard, you know, maybe there was an issue that because of, he came way back when, when this committee was smushed together with forestry and parks, that Steve was the, from the original forest, but Pat said he didn't want to be on it. That's my understanding, so...
Okay, okay.
And Kevin, I think, is perfect, a perfect fit, so...
Okay. Just, just checking.
So we're okay on park?
You're going to approve that, though, the motion?
Uh, we can either do it as a whole or individually.
Let's do it individually.
Okay.
Do, do a roll.
Do you want a community to motion?
Yes.
Motion to approve the Parks Committee citizen...
Second.
So a motion, a second, approve Parks and Rec. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We went to public relations.
We're good.
Uh, that's, there was no change.
Steve Myers.
Steve Myers is the new one.
Yep.
And what is his background?
He works for Charter, he's the...
Oh, perfect.
And see, and that's the type of stuff that I would like to know when, when the things are passed.
But I knew, so, so, I got you. All right, so, motion for public relations?
Motion to approve public relations.
Second.
Motion and second for public relations, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We go to law enforcement.
Uh, that?
We'll skip that one, yeah, that's, we're doing citizens there. Yep. Planning, we'll skip. Deer grow is good. Board of Appeals, all right, so Board of Appeals, it was Tom Sullivan replacing, they didn't, uh, didn't want to be on whoever it was, wanted to...
Okay, and what's Tom's background?
He's a banker.
He's a banker with the, Monro, Monroe State Bank, he's a loan officer.
His kid plays basketball, so he's good.
Nice. So the motion for Board of Appeals.
Motion to approve is...
Second.
So a first and a second, and the zoning Board of Appeals, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Utility was approved, I believe.
Pat, did you keep Katie Giese on as an alternate?
For which one?
Uh, zoning Board of Appeals.
Yes, I know, she's on it, isn't she?
She was a...
No, she's the alternate, she's the alternate, I'm sorry. She's on something else, so she's on Board, anyway.
Border review.
She's on border review.
Okay.
And she's on a killer.
Yeah, so Public Works, that one proved already. So, Board of Review, let's, damn right, we gotta skip that one. Ethics was, okay, so Ethics Board, Mike Raizeback replacing, I can't remember who it was again, but...
Goulding.
Jim Goulding. And just give us a brief...
Uh, he's lived here for eighteen years, he's electrician with Nichols Electric. He's a pretty guy, that's, he's a pretty stand-up guy, so...
And Jim did not want to be on it anymore?
And Jim, that I can handle.
And Christine Anderson agreed to stay on.
Christine's agreed to stay on?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve Mike Raizeback.
Second.
On Ethics.
First and second for Ethics Board to be approved, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Police Commission. We have Tom Sullivan and John Russell.
Mike Whistler resigned.
Yep.
He's getting a new job, and Jeff Statmuller would be replaced. There are two replacements, one's Tom Sullivan, the other's John Russell.
John is a military guy, and he thought he was on law enforcement, he came to law enforcement.
I heard him email.
I know him personally, he's excellent.
Tom was a, is banker, is that correct?
Does he really want to be in, he really wants to be on two committees?
He is.
And, and did Mr. Statmuller say anything to you, or...
Um, he didn't just say if anything comes up, don't know the road, he's helped, just give him a call. I know him from football, so it was, and Tom is just filling Whistler's one year, wait, is it two years? Two years.
Two, yeah. Year and a half.
Yeah.
Is Paul in his, is that...
Yes. Any discussion there?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Yeah, motion, a second, approve the police commission, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance review is good. CDA is good.
The ordinance, we had John Williams replacing Lori Dahlhauser.
Oh, all right. Yeah, we already had a meeting for her, yeah, yes.
And, and I did happen to talk with Lori, and, and she was a little bit upset that she hadn't been talked with at all prior to my phone call today, advising her that, or that, that this change was imminent, or had already been made, and that I had requested discussion. So I guess, is there any reason why you switched, or...
Just new blood.
Just new blood? And what is John's background? Just, I, I mean, I know he ran for village board, but...
He's just been here twenty years, or eighteen years, father or two, you know, it's, just trying to get, a little more, things go on in order, let's get things moving there.
I know John's wife.
Harvey, remember, if you take John off, then you got to find a new secretary. We already stuck him with a job, so...
Did you be voted for a job?
No, no, I'm dead, I have like immunity.
No, I just, I mean, like I said, I just talked with Lori today, and, and she would have been excited to stay on, but I am, you know...
How long was she on?
Uh, I, at least, I think at least four years. I'm not positive, but I...
Okay. I mean, in, in the vein of Alex's questioning, I just have a question for Pat is, I'm not sure that new blood is necessarily really a, a reason to do anything. Was there an issue or a problem with the way she was performing, or the way the ordinance committee was performing?
Well, the ordinance, yes, we have some issues, we got to get the ordinances cleaned up and, and, yeah, we need to get that moving. It's, and I know what she did in the past, I wasn't here in the past, so I'm not criticizing, there's no criticism towards Lori. We're just, again, trying to get some new people in and push things along.
The ordinance committee only met once last year, there's a lot going on. The prior years, there hasn't been a lot of activity. The past meeting, we've, we've, was actually a very good meeting with the crew that we had there. It brought, was brought up that there was ordinances that, which you'll talk about, I'm stealing your thunder, I'm sorry. But we've made, without going through the whole details, because you'll talk about it later, we've made deadlines to finish things that have been left hanging open for several years, and it's really, it seemed like a good working group. I, I don't know the other person, I'm new to the committee as well, but I thought we had a really good team there.
Just to be fair, to the ordinance committee, the, the board, there was direction from the board to specifically not meet due to budget reasons, because...
Right.
Or, or creating ordinances and getting them online in Lee's legal time is pretty costly.
It was, it was a budget issue more than, than anything else, but given the discussion, I will move approval of John Williams to ordinance.
Second.
First and a second for ordinance review approval, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. CDA is signed. City Government was signed. Peer steering, we still haven't a trustee on that yet, I'll fill the opposition for now till we...
Which ones on?
Peer steering. And that's the landfill, Allison Town, that's next one.
Okay, just, do we have somebody appointed to Flynn Hall?
No.
Yeah, yeah, Andy and...
Shireman.
Yeah, they're, they're someplace, but not on...
Does there need to be a board member on that?
Does there need to be a what?
Does there need to be a board member on Flynn Hall?
I need to, yeah.
You are, okay.
I'm sorry, guys.
Who are the two people?
Amber Hart and Shireman?
So, yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry, guys.
They, they were on before, and I think there's...
Give me a first name.
Andy, Amber Hart and Scott.
Yeah. And Dev, in this, in this list, you, there are names in, in the old list from February, there are names and email addresses are on there. Andy's and Scott's.
Did you, Finance and Personnel?
What's, is it under ten G? I guess I'm a little confused on.
Those are the ones that were not passed last time.
Ten G on the agenda, or we do it now at seven?
No, I, I'd wait, I'd wait, because this is just the citizens.
Yeah, but we, we have a new citizen.
But there's a new citizen on Finance and Personnel.
Well, it's a whole, yeah, the, the citizens are done now, we're finished.
No, there's, there's some more questions on, on a couple, Finance and Personnel and Planning.
Oh, we're, we're gonna do, okay, they were gonna do this when we did those, okay?
This one is just trustees, these are the citizen ones.
Okay, all right, I thought that was under seven. Okay, I got you. All right, so we're gonna go to, which one, I'm sorry, law enforcement?
Twelve nine, Finance and Personnel.
Finance and Personnel.
Okay. Heather Dyer was replaced by Todd Schneider.
And, and I guess, just if we may, some, what is the background for Mr. Schneider?
He's a vice president for Mid-America Bank, lived here for about ten years.
Does Heather know that she's not on the committee anymore?
Yes.
She does. And was she okay with that, or...
I couldn't tell, I guess, because I did for her service, and... Don't allow these people, so I don't...
I, I do, I know Heather, I haven't talked to her about this.
She's across the street from me, yeah.
Yeah, she's, but I know she's got a lot going on, so she, she might be with you.
Motion to approve Todd Schneider as a citizen member of Finance and Personnel.
Second.
So we have a motion for Finance and Personnel, citizen appointment, Todd Schneider, for approval, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion carries.
Land. Land. Don Brinkmeyer was, well, there, there were three replacements, Don Brinkmeyer, Aaron Canoe.
And Aaron's moved to Stoughton, he's moved to Stoughton.
And Ken Keely had kind of stopped coming.
Yes.
The issue I have here is that prior to the May Planning Commission meeting, it was fairly clear that Diane Whidenbeck had been asked to serve on Plan Commission. Even to the point of being asked to come to the committee. To the commission meeting.
I'll stop you there, I never told her to come to the meeting, so I'll just knock that right there. Never, never told her to come to the meetings. Nobody suggested she come to the meetings, just for the record, so.
It was suggested?
Never suggested.
Never suggested?
Never suggested. I talked about Planning Commission, but I had a change, I called Lee and I said I had a change of heart.
And when did you change that, when did you change your mind?
I don't know.
And, and I guess, why didn't you call her and let her know?
I did call her, left a message for her. She, she said she didn't call her, but I left a message for her. You know, she wasn't happy, I know she wasn't happy about the decision, but that's.
I.
And, and was there, no, go ahead.
No, I'm, I don't, my.
So Pat, Pat contacted me and said that he had changed his mind about an appointment, and so until the board acts on the appointment, it's not.
Right. I, I did get a phone call from, from Diane, and clearly you guys didn't have a meeting in the minds, because she was very excited, and I thought it showed a lot of charisma and tact of you to do that, I thought that was an awesome, over the aisles, you know, let's, let's build some bridges. So I, I guess, if you, if you told her that, clearly there was a misunderstanding, because she's believing one thing from my chalk with her and, and you're saying another thing. So I think there was some misunderstanding there, which is unfortunate.
I don't, I don't think it had to be planning, I think she just expressed interest in maybe a committee in general.
Yeah, I think, I think you're right.
Yeah.
I did offer another one, but she, she wanted planning, so.
And, and as far, what about Don Brinkmeyer?
I, I just had a change with him too, I just, just.
And, and, and it has absolutely nothing to do with the May, May Planning Commission?
Absolutely has a lot to do with it, it just shows that, yeah, it's a lot to do with it. But again, it comes under my prerogative. You guys can do what you gotta do, but I made my decision. For people to vote on something that may result in a lawsuit, most likely result in a lawsuit, is not in the best interest of the Village Cottage Grove. I'll leave it at that.
The, the simple fact, I think, is that yes, a lawsuit is not in the best interest of the Village Cottage Grove, however, neither is the potential for, for lack of further growth, both either business or residential. And we have to do, we have to maintain our reasonableness and open minds to, to move forward, that's all I'm saying.
Is there more discussion?
This is a tough one, because I don't have, necessarily have a problem with change, right? Change is good.
I think it's just been a long time since we've had so many people interested in committees, and they're kinda.
It's awesome, right?
It's a good thing.
It is awesome.
Normally.
I have a waiting list.
Looking for that.
You have a waiting list, wonderful, I mean, that's great. With that being said, I mean, we've got some people that are on this, on multiple committees, so maybe that's an opportunity to get some, somebody else involved, which is a great thing. Planning is worrisome to me, just because there's so much background that you need to know. That's the only, that's the only hesitation I have with it, I mean Diane would have been great. I understand where you're coming from, Pat, I understand your thoughts on that. I, you know, I know Diane has a, a real desire to stay involved. So that, I think she would have done good things on planning, but I also understand where you're coming from.
Just to continue the theme of learning more about the individuals you're, you're nominating, we've talked a little bit about John. I know Fred's been around for a while, but can you give me a little bit more background on Fred and Mr. Houghton?
Well, Fred's a past, past trustee for, you know, four or six years.
Okay, I just, I, for the record.
Still in the village, lived here for twenty years. Rob has lived here, well, two different places for eighteen years. He was almost gonna run this year, then decided that he'd rather serve in the committee to start, so chose him for that one.
Hey Matt, can you just give us a step-by-step process how Planning Commission is involved with Aaron and the board? If someone was to come to the village with a potential development scenario? Probably Aaron first.
Either Aaron or myself, we meet with them, have a initial staff meeting and you know, gauge the interest. If there's, Aaron kind of walks through the process of approval, and if they would like a meeting beyond that with more staff, we'll provide our engineer at no cost to the applicant, and then, you know, further gauge their interest and see what their timeline is and depending on the location, I mean, there's, if it's in the Commerce Park, there's some other approvals that may be needed as far as the ad hoc architectural committee, so.
That comes prior to Plan?
It can happen concurrently. So.
Pat, can I ask a quick question?
I don't think you can. Sorry.
It's up to you.
No, it's, I'll, it's just a general Planning Commission, and I'll just ask you later, it doesn't matter.
So just, I mean, just, just to clarify, Plan's role is to exactly what?
Well, it's, it's hard to really sum that up.
Should be responsible for planning and environmental matters and should have the powers and perform the functions enumerated in Section sixty-one thirty-five and sixty-two twenty-three Wisconsin statutes, which means nothing to anybody here. Except that it's, they handle, they handle all planning.
Right.
Including extraterritorial and.
Right.
They make recommendations to the village board.
Right, yeah, and that, and that's what I'm getting at, is there's, there's checks and balances to all the, all the steps involved, so there's checks and balances to what goes through, you know, administration, there's checks and balances to Plan, there's checks and balances on the village boards, so.
Time gets to planning, I mean, staff done the most of the work as far as.
Right, 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 so, that, that's, that's kind of my point, is that, you know, I don't necessarily know any of these people either. I know we've had, you know, a pretty successful run here in the last year or two. And, and I'm not opposed to new people coming on, they sound like they're fairly, you know, or, or well-prepared for the position, so.
I just have to go on record as saying that I'm a little bit concerned about whose best interest is at heart.
Okay, okay.
It's not gonna show up on record, because it's an opinion, Harvey, but.
I'm not sure what you mean by that, Harvey.
I think he wants it in the minutes.
I just want, I just.
It's an opinion, you don't put it in the.
That I have, I have doubts about whose best interest is, is.
Well, who says it, you think?
Not the village.
Really?
How can you say that?
So you said, you, okay, I'm sure I took that right from you.
How can you say that? What, what evidence do you have to make that statement?
I, I, I feel as though, and, and it's, and it goes along with my appointment as well. But I feel as though it's retribution for the Planning Commission action of the May thirteenth meeting, and and I guess that's the way life is, and, and, but I, I just want it on record that I feel like it's not in the best interest of the village.
It won't show up in record.
Normally, that's not in the minutes.
Yeah.
Because that's, I mean.
Okay.
If we, if we start putting opinion in the minutes, we're gonna start publishing small novels. The idea is that we vote, and, and for example, I think that I see a difference between if there are questions, you know, if you take a look at some of the Planning Commission minutes, you'll see discussion from board members asking questions about, you know, shrubs and rooftops and landscaping, things like that. That's all appropriate, I, I think that normally we don't put that kind of thing in.
Pat, this came late in the day, I copied you, so I don't know if you had a chance to see it from, from Don? Okay.
Might have Don have to say, if I may ask?
Uh, he was, he was just checking to see what the status was of the appointments.
I think it's on Diane's letter.
Do, do we have a motion at this point?
No.
Okay.
So what, what happens if we don't make the changes or whatever? The same people just stay on that were on it before?
Well, Pat has the opportunity to continue to bring back. If, if you reject one or all of the people that he is proposing to appoint, then he has the opportunity to come back with other names or the same names.
Can I make a suggestion? Is it, is it possible to have those people come to the next Plan Commission and talk to the Plan Commission?
Plan Commission doesn't make.
We don't really have any evidence to say why they shouldn't be on there.
But they shouldn't be, they wouldn't be a plan anyway, it's a board meeting.
Yeah.
You're on with the board meeting.
Okay.
I understand what Harvey and Jennifer are saying about slowing down and getting to know a background about them, and, and I can see getting that right now. I'm not seeing anything here that would kind of say, yeah, that person doesn't fit there, I understand trying to diversify the, the roles and, and spread them out, like, like Jen was saying, and, and that's something to look into, but it's hard to say something's gonna be bad until you try it. I mean, there's nothing to say it's gonna be bad here.
I mean, is that.
It seems like, kind of like what Jen was saying, slowing down Cottage Grove, and, and it seems like that's exactly what we're doing over here with no evidence.
I was gonna say something to support what you were saying, and I forgot what. Oh, we do have the village board, I mean, this is a recommendarial committee.
Right.
I heavily rely on Plan to, because I know that they're doing their homework over there, as long as that's going to continue.
Well, it's, it goes through staff, like they said, and it goes through committee, and so there's a pretty.
I think the, I, I wish if you have, if you have more people that wanted to be on, I wish you wouldn't have doubled up, that's my opinion, but, I mean. I'm gonna make a motion to approve the citizen, the citizen appointments for Planning Commission.
Who's?
Pat's?
Pat's.
Citizens.
Citizens, yes.
So a motion second to approve the Plan Commission citizen nominees, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, wait.
I'll abstain.
Sorry.
Yeah, I didn't.
That's okay.
Would you walk up now?
Okay, so, I think that takes care of all of the.
Citizen members?
Yes.
Okay.
So now item seven. Yep?
Yes.
He's a.
Trustee appointment for Plan.
Great.
Will it, Harvey started?
It's the one I started, I, you know, again, it's, it's nothing either good or bad. It's just, I, I felt like, I felt I had an understanding, and obviously it was a wrong understanding. Again, it was, it was an understanding, kind of just in passing, we didn't really talk about it specifically, it was just kind of a, a passing understanding. So I may have misunderstood, and, and that's, and that's fine, so I, I don't know how to do this, do I just withdraw?
Uh, ask the board to vote down the.
Or ask them to re-approve Kyle.
That, yeah, we'll do that way.
Okay. Motion to approve Kyle Broom as trustee on the Plan Commission.
Second.
Motion second to approve Kyle Broom for the trustee appointment for Plan, all in favor say aye.
Hold on a second. Just, just so you do, I understand what you're saying there, and that makes sense, and I, I obviously am very qualified to go into that position.
I, I don't doubt that.
I'm at a lot of different municipalities, and they're planning and zoning meetings, and see a lot of different things, and.
I don't doubt that at all, and, and, you know, it was, it was just something that I thought we needed to discuss.
Yeah, no, that, that makes sense.
How many committees are you on then?
Two. Two. Thank you for entertaining my request, I appreciate that very much.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Is that everything?
Yeah.
New business, this does consider approval of the police school liaison officer program agreement.
Okay, what's in your packet is a document that has been approved on several different occasions in different, different forms. This may be, this may be one of the first times it's come before the village board, I know it went to LEC first before, or was approved at LEC, but now with the town not being a member of this, that's no longer necessary. The oldest version that I have of what was then known as the police school liaison program was two thousand eight, Jack, I know everyone kind of involved in that, it was either two thousand six, two thousand eight.
Yeah, Chief is doing it from Monona, provided an officer over here, I think it was split between Monona and here, like sometime, two days a week here, three days a week over there, or something like that, but.
Is this different from what we're doing right now?
I don't know if they have more coverage over here now, because.
Well, Chief Labor is going to explain a little bit how it's, the, the agreement is essentially the same. There's no cost to the village, the only cost to the village can be is if there was a riot, or the students take over the school, coming out of the Wisconsin tradition, I, I don't know if that will happen, but it's usually later. But there is no, otherwise there is no cost, the school district reimburses the city of Monona for, for this. However, Chief Labor, and Chief Labor and I have talked about this, and I know that Chief had some comments about his plans for how they would use this.
Well, I think we, we should probably try to rely less upon the Monona school resource officer for participating in our schools, and right now, it seems a little odd to me that that officer has a full-time job at the school, high school, that's where he concentrates his resources, that's where he has his most business. But he comes over to the middle school on an as-needed basis, and I think the Cottage Grove Police Department should concentrate more on that role and take a bigger part in learning the students, learning the staff and the administration over there, and developing a better program to reach out to the kids and deal with the kids that may be problems, and right now, it's a very part-time, part-time job for their officer to come over here. And I don't think we should have the Monona police officer leading our fun run through the village streets, and, and I, nothing personal against them, but that's what we're here for, and I would prefer to have us doing that work.
And that's one of the better parts of your job?
Yes, that's a fun part of the job, the kids.
Would this impact, would this be budget neutral to the district, or would this increase the district's cost, do you think?
You know, we do everything with current staff and current staffing levels. You know, we do everything with current staff and current staffing levels as best as possible.
Yeah, I mean, it's not budget neutral to the district in the sense that they are reimbursing the city of Manona, but it doesn't really change anything.
But it would, it would most likely lessen the amount that they're, that they're reimbursing Manona because Officer, oh, what's his name? Shoot.
Vogeltans.
Vogeltans. See, my kid's got, she doesn't do it. He, I mean, he makes a report, but he wouldn't be coming out here, so it would be less that they're reimbursing for. Is that your understanding?
I think it would be a gradual lessening of his duties out here, and I don't think that they would have any problem with that due to his activity level at the high school.
He's a busy guy.
Yes.
Yeah, they'll probably mostly just park him at the high school then instead of shoot him over here, I would guess, so. And that was gonna be my question too, Chief, was why do we have somebody coming in and, because I, I read in there, it said he can act as a, as an officer of the village of Cottage Grove, and I thought that was kind of problematic potentially, so.
Yeah, he was made into, I believe, a part-time police officer. We don't have part-time police officers right now.
Right.
And I don't know historically why it was done. Could've been a very good idea, or I don't know, but I just think that you have to have someone as a school resource officer at the middle school level. I would just like to have us take over more responsibility.
I think because the middle school was at one o'clock, and then when we developed, like, it just kind of evolved that way.
Yeah, I don't know where that is.
Motion to approve the police school liaison officer program agreement with the obvious changes that will need to be made to his name and stuff, right?
So, well, the agreement is for Manona Police to come over, so we wanna deny that, correct?
No, 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 you wanna, you wanna accept the agreement, but, and I, I say, I don't see that there's anything that needs to be changed.
Okay, I thought, I thought we'd deny that.
As my signature page has, has the, um, village president's have as the clerk of procedure.
I just saw Walter Alstreck. I don't, I don't know that person.
He's the police chief of Manona.
So I'll second.
Motion second to approve the police school liaison officer program agreement. Any other discussion? I just said one thing, Lee, thirteen B, and maybe it's, if you start with MGSD, shall reimburse Manona on a quarterly basis? Should that be Cottage Grove? The other one's pages Cottage Grove.
Yeah, the whole thirteen section's got that.
No, I think it's, it's, if, those are, aren't those the particular expenses of driving out to?
Right, they get reimbursed.
To, to the city of Manona.
Right.
Yeah, it actually gets reimbursed to the city of Manona because, um, uh.
For us?
Even though he, yeah, I mean, he's driving out to the village, and he, and he, and he turns in mileage, and so the school district reimburses the city of Manona for that.
But if he's not coming?
He's not coming here anymore.
Well, that, that.
I'm, I'm not saying that he shouldn't be coming out anymore. I would just like to take on a greater role in, in our involvement at the middle school.
That, that part of the agreement really is analysis between Manona and the school district then, right?
Right.
Thirteen B. So thirteen A, thirteen C is really the additional part of Cottage Grove being written into this contract.
Yep, yep. Thirteen C, right, thirteen C really is the, uh, the area that talks about, um, uh, if, if we actually use the, the officer out here for some, some purpose. And it would probably cover the mutual aid agreement anyway.
Yes.
The turn, yeah, I got a little confused there too, because the police liaison officer talks about Manona, but then we're also, we have the same job.
Yeah, there's smaller kids out here, so I'm sure Manona wants to have their. All right, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Eight D, discuss and consider approval of amendment number one to the agreement dated February twenty-fourth, two thousand fifteen for the reservoir number two restoration project. Mic or Matt?
Sure. Or is this mic? Yeah. Amendment number one for reservoir two is just to complete the application for the, the loan with the DNR. Uh, we had a, a contract to take it through to the decision point, which was March with the DNR. They graded the score for the application, and then we, we, we stopped. So we write our contract to that point in case it doesn't score well, and this is the finishing work we have to do between now and June thirtieth, when the application supplemental is to be completed. And then the, the scope of items are A through G on the second page of it to, uh, for, for performance items that we need to complete.
Mike, is the, um, I think we've, something we talked about before, is the, is this a cost not to exceed? Or, uh, is there a possibility going over the seventy grand?
This is for two thousand dollars.
You want amendment, the first one is the seventy thousand dollar. Are we doing B, which is amendment number one?
Oh, I heard. I'm sorry, I heard the item.
Which is the two thousand dollars, yeah. Yep.
Thank you for the direct.
I'm hanging in there. I'm close.
I'm sorry.
Keep it up.
Yeah, that's great.
So amendment number one.
Amendment number one.
Right, so B is amendment one, which is to complete the application, as I described it. We do it in two phases, because the first part, we run it through an assembly line of applications, and we wait for a score. We got the score back. It was positive, and we've been running that independently of the design, which is actually, you know, out to bid and, and getting ready for construction. We put both Gaston Road and this project through at the same time. There was a time when Gaston Road project was in front of this, and we looked at the condition report of, of reservoir two, and it went in front. So, uh, back when we were doing capital planning, reservoir two went first, and then it was planned to go to the, the second year or beyond for Gaston Road. And we're running ahead on Gast, on the reservoir two, so the closing date of the loan is in September. And, uh, the two resolutions that are coming as another item are kind of how are you gonna finance it between now and September? But this is the complete, complete the application for it. It scored. It's gonna get a loan, but now they want the documentation for items A through G. So. These are just the, the items that, uh, we're doing with Deb and with Endangered Species Review, SHPO, and the final application on the thirtieth. When we're done, it'll look like a full three-inch binder. It'll go in, so.
Motion to approve amendment number one.
Second.
We have a motion second to approve the amendment number one to the agreement dated February twenty-fourth, two thousand fifteen for reservoir number two restoration project. Any discussion?
Is this started? It says approximate start date four-one, two thousand fifteen, so is this? The application process started back in, uh, this, actually, parts of it in December, but our, our contract was to complete. The first step was in February.
That's, that's page one, right? It's got page two, it says two of three. There should be page one.
Oh, sorry.
I just wanna make a change on there, so it's.
Uh, thank you.
There should be page one of three of the amendment.
So is their bid still good? It doesn't give how long it's good for? The bid? Yeah. The bid is good and, and accepted, and, and that's actually under contract. So this is the funding side of it, and that's the construction side to proceed. Kind of just a little more background on that funding. Baker Tilly had reviewed how you're gonna internally finance it till September, and you have reserves in the water budget that will take care of that between now and September.
Any other discussion? And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, eight C, discuss and consider professional service agreement with MSA Professional Services for the Gaston Road Transmission Line Project.
Here, Lee. This is a piece of a gel.
Answer to that one's note two. As a matter of fact, um, now that this project is also going in through the, the funding, it's, it's processes that, you know, the closing wouldn't have, have to happen until just before, uh, between construction and bidding. So we wouldn't anticipate this project would be bid until next February. We do think this project will affect water rates, and there's other operational, uh, things that are being reviewed for the, you know, the water system rates right now. So we talked to Baker Tilly in the beginning of May, and they felt that it'd be sometime in, in your July meeting that they could have a presentation ready to go through, you know, the numbers. They've, they've got the details and our estimates on the construction of the project. And, um, we're kind of in a scheduling situation here that, again, to, to put it, keep it valid for, uh, the loan program. That closes on, uh, June thirtieth, and what we wrote in the memo is, is our commitment to get just what we need to get done, to get the application done. And so we could be in between fifteen and twenty thousand into engineering to get plans and specs prepared for that final application. And you'll be looking at, you know, are we gonna be okay with this in July? So that's the one scheduling issue, you know, we're not happy with, but came about.
Do you just wanna review the Gaston Line project and what it, what it means to the village and the completion of the loop and the high-pressure pressure?
Right. And, and again, we'll, we'll give you a complete presentation along with Baker Tilly on it. We went through a PowerPoint of three phases of projects, and this is the third phase. We indicated to the board back in February two thousand twelve that phase A and B, which we've got underway here, would not affect water rates. But when we got to phase three, if we were going to bank that ahead, you know, Baker Tilly's looking at it going, we wanna be more solvent going forward and, and look at the rates. So to do it, we would also have to do a rate study on this, which would take a few months, and that would be embedded in part of the, the timeline of this project. But, um, Gaston Road is the interconnection between the new water tower at N and I ninety-four and carrying the high ridge line over to the development over by the middle school. So anything north of what Homburg is now developing, including part of their plat, is on a higher elevation. And when we get above an elevation of nine seventy in the village, the current system can't deliver enough water pressure, and so that we developed the second zone to be higher. Reservoir three up by the interstate delivers twenty-seven more pounds of pressure than the standpipe here, and so there's two different zones of pressure. We're regulating that through Wellhouse Four up in the Commerce Park, and then the second place we'd regulate it to release pressure in the lower zone would be over at Homburg's Development. So the pressure-reducing station to allow that went in as part of the development. It's in the ground now. Go up to the Damascus Trail, pass the middle school, and enter their development. It's on the right-hand side near the detention basin, uh, close to the intersection. What's missing is the water main to go north through the Ellery Jensen property, and then down Gaston Road from the west back to the tower on the east, where we have a sixteen-inch water main by the Gaston Schoolhouse awaiting it. And that's what is the Gaston Project.
We talked a little, we talked a little bit about it at Public Works as well. The question I had was, is where does the funds come from? Obviously, it's a big chunk of change. It's not, as far as I know, it's not in the budget plan. We're not, we don't have the loan yet, so we can't convert it to the, to the loans. It's part of what we're doing here is the engineering work. But Matt, I think there were some discussions as well, is that it, there's impact fees from the cell phone towers, or stuff that's stuck to the water system now that we can take impact fees from to offset the costs from the general fund. I'm not sure of all that. That was the only really kind of open question I had.
Impact fees that come from future development.
Okay.
So, not the.
I don't know if the impact fees are the right term for this communication stuff, stuff that's.
That, that wouldn't be enough to, to cover that. Baker Tilly did, when they were discussing this with us, the last actual full rate case that was done for water, by the time this would be implemented, which wouldn't be until next year, will have been a full five, five-plus years since the last increase. And, and really, the longer you wait, the more difficult it is. It's, it's, it's easier to, every couple of years, review the rates, so there isn't some big hit. So, um, it hasn't been discussed in a while. It's coming up with this project, but it's not necessarily just because of this project. It should've, you know, it should be something that's reviewed probably more frequently.
Kind of long-term, you know, we, we've provided them information to tie this water main back to an assessment to all the development on the west side, you know, along Gaston Road and including, you know, the Jensen's and Homburg's properties that would benefit from it. And so they're kind of chewing on that at, at Baker Tilly as well as, you know, whether there should be a special area that, that kind of pays for that particular project. And, um, but, you know, that's kind of a long-term return, you know, waiting for the development, so.
This is also a part of the development agreement with Homburg. They have responsibilities, and we have responsibilities, so this is kind of our portion of it.
The big chunk of change was, was it one point four million? Is that what I read?
That's, that's a total, yeah, estimate on it.
And the application for the loan being done now is, has to do with the state fiscal year and all of, all of the stuff related to that, correct?
Say again?
The, the, the application process that we're doing for the loan has, has a lot to do with the state fiscal year ending in June. Is that correct?
Yeah, I, I'm not sure.
Okay.
I just know that the DNR sets a deadline so that they can process loans from that point forward.
Okay.
But I, I don't know.
If we don't apply for the loan now, we will not get the loan.
Correct.
Correct. If we apply for the loan and don't use it, there's no problem.
Right. This project actually scored better than the rehab of the standpipe up here, and one of the reasons and, and things we found in investigating that area is that there's, um, high nitrate and arsenic in some of the private wells. And so we pointed out, we will have a, a water main on Gaston Road, and, you know, if, if there's people in the town that would, you know, wanna extend to public water, it would have to be reviewed by the village, but, you know, they could potentially have a lifeline there.
So if they want it, it's, it's available to any of the residents up there? Okay. So we need a motion to, um, approve the professional service agreement with MSA and professional services for the Gaston Road Transmission Line Project? I will make that motion.
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second to approve the professional service agreement with MSA Professional Services for the Gaston Road Transmission Line Project. Any other discussion? I would just say that on page two, it should say page two of six. Sorry, guys, I'm a little. Said a two of five. Any other discussion? We have a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, discuss. Nine eight D. Discuss and consider approval of resolution number two thousand fifteen dash zero five. Resolution of unauthorized representative file applications for financial assistance from the State of Wisconsin Environmental Improvement Fund.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Eight E, discuss and consider approval of resolution number two thou, two zero one five dash zero six. Eight E, discuss and consider approval of Resolution Number 2015-06, a resolution declaring official intent to reimburse expenditures.
Motion to approve.
One second.
First and a second. Wait for Ed.
I'm sorry, I just got a text from him that says this is not being televised.
Oh.
We are his favorite show.
Thank you.
All right, Ed. We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2015-06. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Reports to Village Board Commissions and Committees, Dear Grove EMS.
All right, we met on May 21st. Our next meeting is June 18th. We elected Chris as the chair, Jerry as the secretary, which is kind of a revolving door issue with officers, so.
Who's the secretary?
What's that?
Who's the secretary?
Oh, Jerry.
Jim McMuller.
Yep. Oh, sorry, from Village of Deerfield.
Have any of the, are there new players on EMS or is everybody still, groupers still there?
Yep, yep. The village of Deerfield rotates people in sometimes when other people can't make it, namely Greg, because he's off on things. We adopted the resolution to amend the personnel handbook, which was okayed by Dan Barker. We actually sent that to him almost a year ago, and we finally got to it. It wasn't a pressing issue, it was just some minor changes to reflect the union agreement, so we okayed it. We adopted a bike team standard operating policy, so you'll be going to the Village Fireman's Festivals in Deerfield and around here, and you'll see the guys on the bikes. The bikes are labeled and color-coded to match the rigs, and it's a pretty high-tech operation. I was really surprised, they got kits on there to take care of a lot of stuff, probably more than you'd think they could do, but there's official bike team members, there's a bike team committee that takes care of the bikes and monitors the bags and that kind of stuff, so it's, Chief's got it going on pretty good for the bike team. And there was an IRS-mandated agreement to the premium-only cafeteria plan, which simply said that people can opt out if they want for the Affordable Care Act. It's essentially the main thing that was there, but it was, like I say, IRS-mandated. Through April, our run fees are at 182, which is fifty-point-six-nine percent of the budgeted expected run fees of 360. Last year, remember, we topped out a little over four hundred thousand at, seems to be the benchmark these days, is about four hundred thousand income from run fees for EMS, which essentially chops the service cost to the municipalities in half. So, always good news there, the more run fees, the better. Of course, that means people are using the service, which may not be the best thing, but from a budgetary idea, it's a good thing.
Run, I'm sorry, those fees were through April?
Yeah, through April, yep. 182, 861, so fifty-point-six-nine percent through April. And our collected fees for the month of April were 31,973, so almost 32,000. That includes 3,000, which is a refund from our billing service that we realized because we renegotiated the contract with them, and they are refunding us $3,000 last month and $3,000 this month, and as part of that contract savings that we realized. So, it was about half in each of those two months.
I know, I asked you this.
No, that's fine.
It's so irritating. So, the 182, that's what we build out?
No, those are, yes, yeah, that's what we build up.
And we've collected 31...
We collected 31,9 in the month of April.
Oh, in the month of April, okay. I was gonna have a panic attack.
Yep, no, no, no. Through April for the year, we've collected 133,359. 928, which was over 180 days, so Kim was quick to point that out and happy about that. Normally, in the past, we've been seeing monthly collections in the 25 to 27 range. This year so far, 39,8, 31,9, 29,6, and 31,9, so we did have a rate increase about a year ago. We've realized some savings in billings, so all the income reports from EMS are looking very good. We've got some new recruits. Chief sent out a new recruit, Mailer. He got back 10 replies, and so they'll be working on an interview process starting on July 2nd, and that is for LTE volunteers. Again, we have eight full-time paramedics now. We're trying to get grants for one or two Lucas devices. Again, those are the CPR, or actually what's now PPR.
Right, but they're like a pacer that keeps the CPR going automatically when you're bouncing around the back of an ambulance. It's a little easier to have something that's a machine that does it instead of somebody falling over each other trying to do it.
Yep, and they're about 15,000 each, and there's been marked lifesaving results from using Lucas devices because it delivers a more even compression, and that's the key to keeping people alive. Pancake Breakfast was May 2nd. Chief wanted me to thank everybody for coming out. And, let's see, we had... That's about it. We had breakdown for the April calls were 40 in the Village of Cottage Grove, 13 in the Town of Cottage Grove, six in the Town of Pleasant Springs who contracts with us, four in the Village of Deerfield, and 13 mutual aid. So, when we talk about how much each municipality contributes to the service, we often talk about, what's it called, Lee? The billing model for EMS, equalized value. We often talk about equalized value, and there's usually a lot of discussion about that around budget time. And, but typically, the results of our call volume show that the Village of Cottage Grove is the number-one user of the service and subsequently pay the most into the service. So, I think that's about it for EMS. And Pat's on, he wasn't at the last meeting, but look forward to seeing you at the next one.
All right, Law Enforcement Committee, discuss and consider approval of Police Chief's request to create two acting sergeant positions for the Village of Cottage Grove Police Department.
Yep, we met on 5/26, and this was something that was on the previous Village Board agenda, but just for formality's sake, we took it through law enforcement, and it was unanimous to recommend approval of this to the Village Board. I'll let Chief give some background information here as to how it affects the budget and everything, but I guess it's important to point out that the Moffett report showed that we basically had a flat leadership style. You had chiefs, you had officers, and nothing in between. And the goal of Chief Labor and myself and the Moffett report is to have some sort of leadership function 24/7, somebody in a position of leadership, a supervisor on duty, so Chief isn't getting calls at 3:00 in the morning about whatever, and it's just a better situation. For what it's worth, it is budget-neutral for this acting sergeant position. We're talking, I think, 50 cents more an hour, something like that. I'll let the chief talk about the budgetary impact, but the budget previously had a half-year lieutenant position in it, which obviously didn't get filled, so the money is there, it's just being allocated to acting sergeants now, so we have supervision until a second-in-command comes along at some other point, so that Chief isn't the only supervisor, basically. And I guess with that, I'll make a motion for approval of the two acting sergeant positions and open it up for discussion. Second.
The 50 cents per hour is stipulated in the unit contract.
Yep, and these would be represented positions where previously the sergeants were not, I believe. Any questions of myself or the chief regarding this?
We have a motion and a second to approve the chief's request to create two acting sergeant positions within the Village of Cottage Grove Police Department. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Couple other things, just a couple details from law enforcement. The chief was looking into the research and acquisition and deployment of Narcan for his officers. Narcan is an opioid antagonist, which basically saves the life of heroin overdose victims. It's an internasal spray, it's like putting, you know, forward nasal mist. Yeah, I mean, it's real easy to do, it's very effective, and in our situation, police are more often on scene quicker than EMS anyway, and officers all over Dane County are starting to carry this stuff, so. I think we talked about 30 bucks a dose, maybe.
And Chief, you said three a year would be more than what you would expect, or?
I think if we bought three to four doses at 30 to 40 dollars a piece, we'd be well-equipped, and if we go through them fairly quickly, we could replenish them. Hopefully, we wouldn't have to go through any.
A small price to pay to save somebody's life.
Church of Western.
How long are they good for?
I'm not sure what the shelf life of Narcan is with the internasal stuff.
I felt like you told us that.
The research I did said it was well over a year. Yeah, and it's gonna be well worth it to have a few on hand and...
Is it easy to get or buy as far as?
Yes. Okay, so. Rightly available.
Use one or two, you can reorder right away?
Yes. And as far as training, I think we can get the training for the officers for free if they come down with EMS, because we carry the stuff on the ambulance, and, I mean, just so they have the training and they can sign the document that says they're trained.
And I don't think we can overdose someone on Narcan.
No, you could even give it to them if they don't need it, and you're not gonna hurt them. I mean, and that's just something that I think is already, the money is probably in the budget somewhere for this too to start with. I mean, it's not extensive. Okay? And the other thing we talked about was the creation of a police department eligibility list, and I think this partly came from the police commission. Many law enforcement agencies maintain an eligibility list when they do a hiring process just because then you're not starting from square one every time you want to hire an officer, and you can hunt down the next person on your list when you have an opening just a little more efficiently of doing things. And anything you have to add to that, Chief?
No, I'm just, I realize there may be officers at times looking to move on to different departments, and I think I'm getting that inkling at this very moment, so that's why we want an eligibility list, so we don't have a hole in our schedule for three to four months.
Real quick on the Narcan, would it be, is there, you say two to three or whatever, where would they be, I mean, would they be on whatever rig is out?
Well, we would have at least, well, there's three to four primary squads, they'd be in those squads.
Okay, that's what that is.
And if one didn't, then they would need to take the first aid kit from that and put it in the one they're driving, just like if they have an AED, it always is with them and they're working.
Okay, yeah, that's what I'm saying is, because it seems, I mean, if we're gonna buy two or three, we might as well buy five or six if we need them.
Oh, sure.
You know, so. Just want to make sure they're, the rigs are adequately, you know, adequately stocked, so whatever's out there, whichever one's out there needs it, because, I mean, if you need it, you need it for the next 30 seconds, otherwise you probably don't need it anymore or something like that, you know, so.
So, if an officer drives a different squad than they normally drive, they just transfer it into that squad when they come on.
Okay. I'd say get as much as you need.
And then, I guess, last but not least, we talked about updating on the vehicle replacement program, and I think the chief found an opportunity for some cost savings, looking at lease versus purchase when we start having to rotate vehicles. We have a couple with 120,000 on them now, and with fewer miles being put on in the village, hopefully, maybe not, but maybe your lease is a better option than purchase. So, if anything to add to that, Chief?
Right, I've done that before with leasing versus capital expenditures, and this is something I haven't spoken with Matt at length about, but it's something to explore at this point, because leased, owned through Ford, you lease it for three years at about 16,000 dollars per vehicle, and after three years, you own the vehicle. No mileage limitations, and if you own that vehicle after three years, and sometimes police vehicles after three years have a lot of worth, sometimes not much, but generally, they, after three years of use, you would expect to have at least trade-in value of 10,000 dollars, which you could apply towards your next purchase and/or lease. So, it's something that we will research and figure out whether or not it fits the model here in Cottage Grove.
Thanks for looking at it.
And I guess our next meeting is Tuesday, June 23rd, 5:30 at the Police Department, if anybody's interested. That's all I have.
That's big, Landfill Committee. It's still there.
Kyle and I were there, we approved the monitoring bills. The interesting thing that I found out, Lee asked, actually, the day after, I think it was, how did the meeting go? It was very short, and I said, no, I was there. So, it was long, I had questions. But the monitoring bills were approved. The interesting thing I thought about, found out about the monitoring is that the town actually pays for additional monitoring points that are beyond our agreement, and there's history and reasons for that. I just found that that was interesting, that they were doing that. And those are bills that they solely pay for. We reviewed the monitoring results, and there was nothing actionable on those results. I was elected to be the secretary, and Steve is gonna continue as the chair, and we schedule the next meeting in the end of July. And that was...
You got elected secretary? I thought you said you were at the meeting.
Yeah. Short straw.
How long do we have to continue the monitoring, I mean, until whenever?
It's forever, I mean, unless you... It's a DNR thing at this point, unless you mediate, my understanding is environmental stuff. You would have to mitigate the whole issue, which would probably mean, like, dig it up and send it to a proper... It's a very small plot of land, I was actually surprised about that, too.
Yeah, it's not much.
So, at some point, yeah, is that something that the village and the town is gonna want to say, hey, you know what, we're really kind of done with this? You know, for the thousand dollars every quarter, whatever it is, as opposed to mediating it?
I mean, if there's not high enough levels for 20 years, I mean, at some point, do they say, okay?
Can you make money off the methane, or, you know? Put a little turban on the top or something, I don't know.
I think it would be a tough sell with the DNR, and there's a lot of, a lot of history on the landfill, unfortunately.
What is your view?
We met on the last Wednesday in May. We began, or I was elected chair, and John Williams was elected secretary. We had a fairly lengthy discussion on a sexual offender replacement ordinance for the village. Bottom line there is, we're gonna bring a draft back for our next meeting in June, and it's gonna be based on a combination of the South Milwaukee ordinance and the town ordinance. We have, there was on the agenda a couple of ordinance chapters that have been longstanding in terms of needing to be looked at. As Alex mentioned earlier, we did set some deadlines. One is, one, we hope to have revisions done by the end of summer, and the second one by the end of the year. And we'll be meeting again on June 24th.
Are you working with Chief on that, that sexual predator?
We will, but I want to make sure he gets involved with it. There's been two recent developments. One is, there's been, there's going to be a bill introduced, it may or may not have, which might preclude municipalities from adopting ordinances like this or enforcing them. And the second thing is that there's a series, there's a case in Milwaukee where the communities surrounding Milwaukee all adopted these types of ordinances. And the Milwaukee Circuit Judge told Department of Corrections that they wanted, or Social Services, that they wanted, he wanted a individual placed in one of those municipalities. They said, we can't because of these ordinances, and he said, I don't care about the ordinances, I want the person placed. And in effect, what the ordinances have done is preclude the placement of these... And in effect, what the ordinances have done is preclude the placement of these individuals, which is probably true. So that's, I would say that there is some, there are some legal issues on the horizon.
That was going to be my question. If we bring forward an ordinance, are we opening ourselves up for potential lawsuit?
The law, the new law that's being proposed would just overrule.
Well, I mean, let's say we, let's say we put it in place and then somebody wants to move in and we don't let them and they sue us. I mean.
Well, I think that we have to, we have to see where this, where the law goes. And we are, we talked about this at the committee, about whether it made sense to pursue or not. The ordinance that we're going to primarily use, in addition to having the town ordinance as a, as a source, is an ordinance from South Milwaukee that has been up to the Court of Appeals and upheld. So that's.
No, I know that.
But I, can I guarantee that we won't get sued? No. But I think that the likelihood, at this point, we're going to look at the possibilities and bring it back to, bring it to the board to see where the board wants to go.
And not necessarily from an individual, but I know that the landlords that operate those homes may see an opportunity there, you know? So that's my only concern, but.
Well, we're, yeah.
I'm assuming you're treading lightly and involving all the necessary experts in this process, right?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, we will handle it here.
We will.
Yeah. Obviously, but getting chief labor's input and review will certainly be part of it.
Probably make it pretty simple, but not spend a whole lot of time. If they're going to override us anyways, no sense.
Well, that's part of the discussion. And, and so.
But there might be a grandfather use or something, right?
No.
No, there won't. Not grandfather or grandmother, I'm afraid. It's not going to happen.
It's actually a little bit weaker than the one that Harvey and I talked about a couple of board meetings ago. Originally, the state bill was three points of presence. They reduced it to two. There will always be places in the village where a resident could, you know, a person could be placed. So we're creating these zones, but there's also going to be areas that aren't our coverage, so.
Parks recreation foresting.
Do you want my report first, or do you want to work on these things first?
Well, I don't care. Up to you.
Oh.
Do your part first.
Okay. So we met on May twenty-first, and we have closed Taylor Park indefinitely. There are thirteen trees marked for removal in there, widowmakers. And it's not in the budget to take them down, so we have closed that park for this budget cycle. We had Mark from the fire department come, and another, Kevin Lachenberg, our new committee member, is also on the fire department, so that's a really good link there. We are working with the firemen to fix the electrical situation over at the concession stand over there on Fireman's Park because it's a public hazard, and Fireman's Festival is fast approaching. So we're looking to spend about four hundred dollars from each group. We have it in our budget. It's not an issue. It needs to be safe. And then we're going to take a look at what, what really needs to be done out there and who's going to pay for it. We also have a couple things. A hot dog lady. I know, that sounds ridiculous. There's going to be a woman who is going to be coming and selling hot dogs at Houston and Community during the baseball games. So that's cool. We had our golf outing. I know I didn't make it, but I wanted to publicly thank Kathy Clinkey and her team. She's a force to be reckoned with and does a great job on these things. So that's a wonderful thing. We also got word from the police, thank you, that they will be doing our background checks for coaches, so that's going to save us a lot of money. So that's a pretty good thing. McCarthy Park plan is finished, and June twenty-fifth, a town hall is the open house, if you, if you care to check that out. I think that's everything. Oh, our next two meetings for June and July will actually be the fourth Thursday of the month to accommodate vacations and such. Do you want?
Just, I have a question about the hot dog lady.
Okay.
And it might be, does she need a vendor permit or does she have?
She apparently has drawn a vendor permit, and I talked with Lee and good to go.
Okay, great.
But I talked to Deb.
Yeah, well.
Because I don't.
Y'all end up talking to Deb.
It's a peddler's license. Yeah.
Is that, okay.
Trains you to.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
We're allowing transient hot dogs.
Oh, one more thing. Rugby, we are working on meeting Matt, Sean, myself, and the rugby board. We are working on doing that sometime in July, is the plan. So watch for updates on that. On your agenda tonight, the first thing there is to discuss and consider awarding the bid for concrete replacement at Dublin Park Shelter to Vogli Landscaping. This was unanimously passed by parks. It's the lowest bid. This is the, this is the group that is, or the company that is doing the concrete work already through Badgerland. This is their subcontractor. So that is the bid we're asking the board to accept. Do you want to add anything to that, Sean?
Except that it will really coincide well with the rest of the concrete that they're finishing right now. So it can, it can all tie together and be one project instead of spreading it out, you know, in possibly more into July.
Because they were substantially more reasonable because they're there. It makes sense.
The other question I had was, was there anything on the Hamburg bid that wasn't on the Vogli bid?
No, I checked with Mike on that, and it was pretty much apples to apples.
Oh, it looked the same to me, but.
Yep.
Saw in the Hamburg bid, layout for work and touch up existing base course wasn't on this bid?
It is included because they're, they're the landscaper of record for the, for the rest of the project as well.
Okay. I guess my question on this is, it's, that bid's dated from January. Is it still accurate and?
Which?
The Vogli?
Yeah. Says one-thirty fifteen in the top right corner.
That's probably the date of the document, maybe.
Yeah, that bid was done like no more than a month ago.
There's no date on here in the bid, then? There's no, I mean.
Well, there's no date at the bottom because it hasn't been signed and returned, but that, that.
Well, like, matching it up with Hamburg's bid, it's very clearly that they have a date on here. I know what we're getting, I know what we're not getting. And looking at their bid, there's no date. It doesn't say how long it's good for. It doesn't say if there's penalties that they go over. I mean, what's our protection here?
But it's going to be fifteen thousand eight hundred and forty, or four hundred and eighty dollars.
So where does it say that? There's a bid, but it doesn't say how long it's good for, what date this even came out, and if they're going to follow through on that.
I don't, I get what you're, what you're saying except for it's not really relevant. I mean, just because there's no date that the, that it was drawn on, if it's signed by both parties.
Well, all three of these bids, and for what I'm seeing, it looked like this one was January, this one was April, this one was May. They went up every time. This looks like a winter bid to me. I don't know if it'll still be good in the spring.
Well, it'll be good. That's all we're going to.
So then, can we, can we say subject to putting that they'll follow through and how long it's good for?
We're only going to prove this much.
Yeah. We're going to exceed this much.
Yeah, but contractors come back all the time and say, sorry, it went up to nineteen five. And what do we?
That's a shame. They won't get that from us.
Yeah.
My question was, it's.
It's like a month ago, so I didn't notice that on the top.
At the April twentieth board meeting, the original receipt was nineteen-three, which is Hamburg's. So Nelson came in after the fact, but Vogli's dated one-thirty. How would they not add a little bit on April twentieth?
They're saying it's not dated.
This is, this, I think this is the date of his form.
Oh.
Or he didn't change it because we just got this.
And wasn't the April stuff from Hamburg just kind of an estimate for?
I did not, I did not look for any other bids until after the Hamburg one because I didn't know if we were authorized to spend any money at all.
And this money's going to come out of where?
Park development. Unless you want to pay for it.
No. But is that, but that's the fund that was short, correct?
No. That's, that's the fund that is paid for by developers. It's not taxpayer dollars.
Right, it's impact fees.
It's, no, it's not impact fees. Fees in lieu of, fees in lieu of, of land and permit fees.
Potato, potato.
My other question is, I think these are really good bids. One of the things I didn't see, like the warranty, how does that work for concrete? Is that usually a one-year or?
One-year statutory.
It's up, so in one year, get it back out there this spring.
And we did require them to provide another certificate of insurance for this job. They did for the, the rest of the job within the bid packet, but Deb has that on file for, for this particular job.
Okay. Any discussion?
I mean, will they literally accept this bid and just put those things on there to protect us that just says it's this date and it won't go over this and it's good for one-hundred-and-twenty days?
Once we sign this, if it's not the number, then we're not going to do it.
Well, you're approving it.
For that money.
Right. And then they can come back after the fact and say.
No, they can't. We approve.
Well, yeah. Unless any changes are. They'll come to the board and say it's a good idea to approve another three thousand dollars or.
Unless any changes are made, they can't charge us more than what we approved.
If, if there's, well, I mean, I'll look for some version from the board, but if there's some kind of, I mean, we have contracts that we use with, through MSA, contracts that we, that we use all the time, that we can incorporate this into if we need to. Just a question of, and, and that will give us the protections that you're talking about.
I mean, there's performance bonds and surrogies, but I don't know at this size project if that is something that we could really pursue.
We had a short form contract to add all those items. I mean, like Sean was saying, we had to call because it isn't, as Kyle was pointing out, it wasn't a very clear bid price book. So we said, does it include all these items that Hamburg had? And they came back with a yes, affirming that. And so we could put those items into a contract they'd sign with the correct date and, you know.
And obviously, Sean, you're not going to sign off unless it's all been done, so.
That's all right. We won't, we won't pay.
But I mean, that's, you know, the, the short form contract that Mike's talking about is what I meant. And we can certainly do that, and that'll protect, that'll, should answer any of the questions that are, that are here.
Any discussion?
And you had a discussion with him, Sean, about this? You said this is what we need?
Yes. I actually have emailed documentation because we, we challenged him on the questions that it wasn't very specific with the difference between Hamburg and that bid. So we challenged him on that. I do have.
Okay. So you have, you have an okay email chain up?
Yep.
Motion to approve the concrete replacement, awarding the bid for concrete replacement at Dublin Park Shelter to Vogli Landscaping to not exceed fifteen thousand four hundred and eighty dollars and with the, and direct staff to create a short form contract?
Second.
Motion second to award the concrete replacement at Dublin Park Shelter to Vogli Landscaping for fifteen thousand four eighty, and staff will have a short contract. Is that right? All in favor, say aye.
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 Can you just make sure it says not to exceed, not four? Because if it comes in less, I don't want to pay fifteen thousand four eighty.
It never comes in less. Well, I'm with you. I'll hope for you. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right. I'll feed on Bakken Park concept plan. We have a public speaker?
I have two more questions.
Questions?
Sure. Who wants to sit next to me?
Okay.
Absolutely. I don't bite. Back on June sixteenth, the.
State of the day.
Oh, Chanel Martenson.
And residence?
I'm at forty ninety Malice Road, and I am in the town, but right next to the park, as you all. Anyways, you guys were given a letter back on June sixteenth in regards to the stormwater overflowage that's going across my property. You guys aware of what I'm talking about?
Yes.
Okay.
June sixteenth.
This is last year.
Last year?
Last year.
Okay.
It was my understanding that they were going to take care of this in the spring. I think we're past spring, but maybe with these updates, you're going to answer my questions. Otherwise, you're in violation, and I'm going to give Jeremy a call.
I don't know if it's past spring.
That's a.
The hearing or there? Potato, potato, tomato, tomato, whatever. I don't know. So I just want an update because Jeremy said he has called and emailed and has gotten no response. And when I'm saying Jeremy, he is from the water resource in here.
Who did they email?
I contacted the village.
Right.
I thought it was Matt. You? Matt?
That'd be me.
Yeah, that's you.
Do you know, when?
I, I don't know. I'm just doing what he says. I'm so sick of this freaking park, I could puke. So don't ask me these stupid questions. It's right there.
The, the thing is that something was worked out with the county, and Jeremy does know who the contact person is. And it, all we're really trying to do is to find out, has there been a contact? And I'm assuming that out of tonight, what we'll do is make contact with him to find out what he's talking about.
The question is, when is it getting done? I was told there was not enough funds or Jeremy, I'm just relaying what Jeremy has.
It's untrue.
Why wasn't it done in the fall before?
Because the plan is to do it in the spring.
This, this, this was from June. There's plenty of time to have it done. I guess, I don't care what happened in the past, let's just move forward. Do you have a date set that you were going to take care of this?
We've talked to JJ, and he's looking for an opening, you know, in June here to do it. I know that. So we, we had him at staff meeting and talked about it.
We did have JJ, the director of DBW, so that could explain some of the delay. Now, previously, you had some pretty heavy water runoff issues over the driveway. Did you experience that this past melt season?
We have, what, what has happened is our driveway, because of the runoff, is now all cracked, which you guys were aware of because the village did come in and seal some of those cracks. But it's just eroding more. No, we did, we had a nice, we had a normal thaw.
Right.
For winter. It's when we have those abnormal thaws, or when we have the abnormal rainfalls. Yes, my property floods. I can bring in videos of it. Yes, my property floods. I can bring in videos of it. And yes, it did flood and I do have pictures of the spring where water's running across my driveway.
Okay, I'm just asking because I didn't know if it occurred this year or not.
I sat here for two, it doesn't matter.
What I, what I was getting at was, is there more damage to the driveway? That's what I was going with that.
It's, it's heaving apart.
Okay.
But there's a, I mean, the, the plan is in place to do it and staff is planning to do it, so look forward at this moment.
Summer 2015 starts June 21st.
Yes, I know. It's my daughter's birthday. It's the first day of summer. The other question is, when I was asked about a plan question, can I ask that really quick? How can, or how did it get approved when the engineer said what they did is not correct and still went ahead and did it? It, it's, I'm just trying to understand the, how the planning stuff.
I'm not quite sure what you're referring to.
It doesn't matter.
Do we see it?
Well, I mean, it doesn't matter.
No, it doesn't matter.
I'll bring it up and see.
I just wanted to understand how the, how the, when a project is put together, you're given information from an engineer. And sometimes maybe that informa, that information or those directions aren't always. The engineer's drawings were correct, but yet when it was developed, it wasn't done as to the engineer's specs, am I saying that?
I mean, I don't, I don't know if we all know that's correct.
It's a general question. I'm not saying in this.
I think, I think the issue is, is that the, the village, as I remember it, when we went through this before, the village met its standards and then there was, your complaint went to the county. And the county indicated that there, it was not, something didn't meet their requirements. And so, that's what the negotiation was all about.
Isn't stormwater ordinance the same, not or where?
No, not necessarily.
No, we had a very different interpretation than the county did. And so, this was a compromise to try to, try to solve your problem. And the county went along with that and the project is scheduled. Or is going to be taken here.
The county actually admitted to us that there wasn't an issue yet and, and we were to fix this.
But you guys knew there was an issue because they, you guys came out and fixed one.
No, that was unfortunately no good deed goes unpunished. That's really what happened there.
I think at this point you wanted to ask the question on when it will be done. Got answered it'll be done before the end of June here. Summer's June 21st. I guess I'd recommend coming to the next meeting and see where we're at.
Is this, is this, um, more, Matt, is this more Public Works or is this Properties Committee? Like who would? Or is it JJ's group? He's doing it solely or are we contracting it out? Do you know any of that information?
The, the plan staff, staff do it and.
Okay.
I think Mike was actually even.
I volunteered to set grades for them, but this was a design where, you know, they, they brought in professional services outside. We reviewed it and it met ordinance, but, um, we did some things to kinda clear a pathway through their driveway where their culvert was buried. It was completely buried and, and the lawn went right to the street. We found a hole in that and then the village cleared their culvert out. Now, they'd like to have the outfall turned towards their culvert so it'll flow around their driveway and into the kettle. There's a kettle south of their property that water will always sit and percolate. And so, that's, the project is to move a gabion outfall kinda from facing their driveway to face their culvert, which we decided, yeah, there's some labor in that, but we can get that done in a day. Pond percolates very well. I actually videotaped it. You can hear it percolating water into the ground. So, it doesn't outfall very often if it does.
I'd like to say, when you guys, when it first was put in, and maybe I don't understand a bison pond or whatever the heck that thing is, it did not work at all. But maybe that's because it didn't, I don't know.
Whatever's happening, it's working fantastic right now.
It, it has been working, yes, except for when we have a huge rain or unpredictable, not normal seasons.
The village just planned to move that culvert, so it's not facing your driveway.
I know, I have the plan. You're still doing, is this?
Still doing that plan.
Is this the same plan that you guys?
Yep.
Plan on doing?
Yep.
So, June 21st.
June 21st. We'll see at the end of the.
I see that there's a stakeout there. I was more interested in just when it was going to happen. It's all.
You know it's frustrating.
Especially when no berms there and no, nothing that was, I was, I was promised and blah, 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 you know, it doesn't matter. It's the past. I have to move forward.
Thank you.
Now I'm here to review it without getting too much.
So, in your packet, you, you should have the updated concept plan for Bakken Park. Uh, there's nothing new there from what I told you the last time. It's just, um, a very pretty drawing.
That's very nice.
Of what we've, we've passed. So, Parks is very excited to, um, have this completed. If anybody wants to contribute, Sean, is that?
Can I get a copy there? Or where can I go to get a copy?
It's on, it's on the website.
Um, the village?
Yeah.
In the meeting though?
I think it's on the Parks page.
Thank you.
So, I don't, I don't think we need to approve this. I just wanted you to have the, the nice copy. Did anybody have any questions? It's better than I thought.
Your report from Superior Support Steering, Public Works.
Okay, um, we had a good meeting. Um, this is, uh, I have notes, I'm just gonna read it. So, this was our first meeting at the new building. Um, the conference room is really nice. Uh, one thing I do wanna point out, I did make a mistake, but I was fortunate. Um, nobody from the public was there. So, we had the meeting set up in a conference room style, which is a very nice room. It's very easy to set up in. Um, but what I do recognize is that there's potential for our backs to be turned to the public if they show up. So, it's just a note to just be careful, to, to watch out for that. Uh, we talked about Conservancy Court Marsh. Uh, they're looking to do some above the waterline grading to alleviate some drainage issues. Uh, I, I don't know what the deadline is for that. Uh, we do have a meeting tomorrow and it's on the agenda. We're gonna discuss that a little bit more. Uh, we discussed the drainage issue for the new door by the cleaning bay. Yes, sir.
I know, that's my neighborhood back there. Uh, and I talk with my neighbors and there is interest in wondering what's going on. It might not be a bad idea to, to toss out an invite to those neighbors at some point. Not yet.
Oh.
But at some point. So, you know, they're kind of included in the process because they, people are kinda wondering. And I, you know, have kept, kept in touch with JJ on this, but I, this is not my area of expertise, so.
It seemed, they were in the information gathering part and I think it's definitely important to get a packet and then do some outreach and say this is, even if it's just to walk around and drop a, a nice picture out, is what they wanna do.
Yes. And I'm not suggesting that you do it, do it right now because you don't wanna invite people to a meeting and not have anything to tell them.
There's a lot going on, but their input's always valuable, so that's good.
And this, this issue did come from one of the residents, so.
Um, we discussed the, the drainage issue for the door, for the new cleaning bay. We all agree that the door is really valuable. It's a good thing to have. We talked about it before at our board meeting. Um, so JJ's gonna work at shooting some levels and working with his team to come up with some alternate ways to alleviate the drainage issue while incorporating, um, future plans as well. They, they started talking about gutters across the back of the building and how the water drains to the north side and it's shadowy. So, it, it freezes in the winter. So, can we, can we shoot all that to one side, pick up one culvert? So, his team's looking at that. He has some concerns about the current method for the compost and brush drop off. Uh, the first thing he noted was the stairs. So, they have the two large dump trucks with a nice platform for the stairs you gotta walk up. Not the best, necessarily the best thing for a residence to use. The second issue is the trucks get filled up with things that are not supposed to be in there. It is a very specific drop, brush, drop off. But as a place to put other things, large tree branches, root balls that aren't supposed to be on there. Now, they have to climb in there and sort it. Uh, the third issue is they come in Monday morning or they're coming in the next day. There's an emergency in the middle of the night and they need the truck. It's occupied with stuff. So, they have to empty it and then they gotta go and, and use it. So, JJ's looking to make some sketches and a long-term plan to use what's called waste concrete blocks. Those are the big blocks you see on the side of the road sometimes. Um, they're very inexpensive. And build, uh, like a pavilion that you could segregate very easily. So, very similar to like a recycling center, glass, bottles, green glass. You sort of have that opportunity to, to sort. The user will have a tendency to do it. So, he's looking to build a sketch for that and, and help alleviate that issue. We talked about a path forward for Bonnie Road. Uh, Public Works has started the transition to the new building. We asked JJ to be out by the end of August. He has a lot of stuff to move. And we need to assess the condition of the building and what to do with it. There may have been some reports he was looking for that, that there were some repairs made and was there any professional report saying these are issues with the building? There's no particular due date for this, but we are gonna put it as a reoccurring agenda item to figure out a path forward.
I might be able to actually find the original purchase documents.
Okay.
They dropped on me the other day from our, in our subterranean cave where we keep all this stuff. And, uh, I, I can't remember if we did environmental at that time or structural, but, um, it was just a little like machine shop or something like that.
But in, in its current state, it's just the roof is all that's been examined.
Yeah.
So, it could, it could use an inspection.
He noted some repairs that, hey, that's newish. So, he was thinking there might have been something even after the purchase of like, but he's, but it might not have been formed. He might, hey, I recognize that as a pair, but maybe there's no necessarily a doubt.
We also have to be careful if, you know, I start fixing something and now you have to fix it up to a certain code. You know, we gotta look into all those kinda things and, you know, or.
It's one of those.
Or other options.
Yeah.
So.
The, the goal though is to, to set a path forward, um, get out of the building so we can see the building and all that other type of stuff. So, he's working on that. Um, that'll be a reoccurring agenda item. He also updated us on plans to have properties assessed for issues. The goal will be like to fix problems before they shut facilities down, you know, hearing about electrical issues in the park. You know, it's stuff that, could we have caught some of these things prior to it being an event? And so, he's working, Sean still, he left. They're working together, actually. He left. They're working really well together to, to coordinate those efforts. So, um, that was really good to hear. Uh, we had the reports from the engineer and the directors and actually our next meeting is tomorrow.
Sounds like the purchase of the new municipal services building with the additional land may come in handy for future expansion if we need.
Yeah, there was discussion what to do with the back. You know, do we wanna do the brush stuff? So, yeah. There's even a whole section of the building that hasn't been touched. Not if I cough on it first.
I already staked my click.
No?
No report.
Dick?
No report.
Alex?
Oh, um, I attended the director report meeting. I just wanted to mention that it was really great. I'm gonna thank Matt and his team for really going out of their way and, and, uh, giving us packets of stuff that they're working on. I don't get to work with everybody. I'm working a lot with JJ and some of my committees, but it was really nice to see what Sean's doing, the police department's doing, Aaron's doing. So, I just wanted to thank you guys for putting that on.
And I don't want the rest of the board members to get upset, but they have now pink and yellow, uh, open meeting law and open records. I think yours were different colors, but that's the colors we guys left, so. We'll be able to kinda trace the, trace these as time goes on.
Look for my complaint in your email.
Yep.
Um, real quickly, Andrew is still waiting on the camera to come in, but everything else is here. So, that's supposed to be in, I think he said on June 8th. So, soon we'll be shooting stuff here in the village. Uh, don't forget, uh, the Emergency Government Committee meeting at Paul Davis coming up later this week. And I forgot about the meeting on May 28th. I'm sorry. I was, I have no good excuse. I was cutting my grass and by the time I realized what was going on, it was, it was about 8:30. So, I apologize and.
You'll probably find it on the web, on, on cable or you could request a DVD if you'd like.
There you go. I haven't had a chance to watch it yet, but I will be at the June 29th meeting. And that's all.
Going to a, a, a private business, that's not a problem, right, for us? To Paul Davis?
I'm sorry, what?
Okay, just wanted to make sure I didn't know.
No, and we ran it through committee.
Okay, oh yeah, I didn't know, I just still would.
Wait, 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 I'm, I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't catch.
We're having the Emergency Government Committee meeting at Paul Davis this coming week.
Okay, uh, yeah, I don't think there's an issue with that. Do we do work with them or do they, are they contracted?
No, they're, they're a vendor if, uh, they're needed for, um, you know, like emergency restoration services. Correct, correct.
There's no, there's no implied contract.
Yeah, well, no, I, I mean, I, as long as, as long as the notice says where, where it is, that's a good question.
Yep.
I mean, you had the, it's interesting because I didn't bring it up. I read it. I mean, it, as long as the meeting is, you can do it in private premises, but obviously it has to be accessible to the public, properly posted, which it was. And there's a whole paragraph here about that section.
Yep.
So.
Jennifer?
Okay, uh, I had the honor of speaking at senior night this past week to all of the scholarship recipients, which was just fantastic. It's a, it's a wonderful night. Um, and congratulations to the 2015 class from Monocle High School. Graduation is Saturday. Just so you're aware, I don't know how closely you follow, um, the.
Is it Sunday?
I think it's Saturday. I'm pretty sure it is. I could be wrong though.
No, I don't.
I don't want to take graduating, but I think she's singing it. I, I don't know how closely you're following the school district, but there was some grumblings, um, that I, I noticed. The school district just recently passed a $35,000 remodel to Cottage Grove School, which is interesting since they just remodeled it. Uh, my understanding is that they're building a wall around one of the secretaries, not because she's an awful person. She's a lovely person. But I, I don't know why, why, why they're, they're doing that. Um, Dan is currently on sick leave. He's been in the hospital. So, I haven't been able to talk with him.
He's wounded?
Carotid, I have.
He's pre-entangled?
Carotid, an aneurysm. Carotid brain aneurysm. Is it safety issue? You know, when they're building the wall? I don't know. I haven't, I have, I just got notified of this and shame on me. I wasn't going to see it be there, so I didn't. The vote had already taken place, but I, I felt like the board members probably weren't in the same position and not know that this had happened. So, just in a plan. Um, and congratulations to the show choir for next year. Got an outstanding, there's two pickles on the show choir next year and I'm geeking out for it. So, if you wanna see some good, uh, show choir activity, MG's place. And happy anniversary to my husband. 19 years today.
His birthday and his anniversary.
I know. Awesome.
Harvey?
No report.
All right, trustee, plenty of appointments. Finance and personnel will be first. I don't know who wants to start. The original appointment was Alex and Jennifer and Herbie objected, I guess. I, I'll just listen to arguments and fire away.
I, I will, yes, I just assumed after our conversation.
Yeah, but I guess I, there was like Harvey, so let's just get out of, let's have a conversation if we know.
So, I believe, I have been on this committee in, in the past and chaired it. And I think I've done a pretty, pretty decent job of that and I would like to be on more than one committee.
Special? This is Parks, you said, or Finance?
Finance first.
Jennifer is a watchdog. She's very, very, uh, very cautious. But she's, she's very responsible with, with the public dollar and, and she, she watches things very closely and, and does. There are things that she would like to approve, but she knows that the village can't afford it. So, she, she, she willingly votes against certain items in the budget. And, and that's, that guidance, that, that fortitude to stand up and say no is important.
John, can you go over some of the things you've been doing, uh, on the finance committee currently?
Sorry, your email wasn't up on me.
Yeah, I just, it was, the description didn't say much. I just was curious on what they do and.
The finance part of it is generally August through the end of the budget cycle. So, the board typically approves the levy in December at a first meeting, correct? After a public hearing. We like to do it the last meeting in November. The first meeting in December is the drop dead. The last. That's when we've been during the last couple of years, but I'd like to move back to the last minutes in November. So, we generally start meeting in August with Matt putting together the preliminary, um, uh, no, first we, we've got to start with direction. The finance committee gives direction to Matt. Uh, Matt gives that direction to the department heads. The department heads put together their budgets. Uh, Matt reviews it. The president reviews it. Finance reviews it and goes through it line by line and then streamlines the, the process so, um, the village board can approve it without spending two days here like we used to. And then the personnel part of it, I have, um, been involved in the hiring process for Matt and for JJ and for Sean. So, we, um, put together a hiring committee, which usually consists of president, Matt, myself and, um, someone from the committee. So, when we hired Sean Reese, sat on that committee. When we hired JJ, um, Kristen and Chris Dyer sat on that committee. Oh, Jeff Schreiner sat on the committee for Sean. And we review the applicants. Usually the, the applicants all go to Matt. Then he weeds them down to his top six to 10, 10's more than he wants to give us. And then we, um, interview those folks. Uh, the village board is always welcoming to come to those, but generally they don't. And then we present our, um, our selection. And then we present our selection to the village board and then it's approved. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I just, you know, most of the committees online, under the description, give a little brief overview and I, it was kind of missing, so I was just kind of curious on. Is it do just more of the budget and receipts, or does it do everything, investments and?
Well, we, I mean, we were involved in hiring Ellers, so we had four or five.
Well, the IRP process that came to the board.
Yes.
And there's, not to add another ordinance that could be revised, but there's a lot of, looking at the finance personnel ordinance, there's a lot in there. So the committee does that, either the committee has deferred to me or is in my job description or like, for instance, the audit, it's more of a budget matter. Baker Tilly comes just to the board to do the review. They'll be coming next meeting. We'd have to pay for them to come to an additional meeting. And with already three board members on the committee, it's been viewed, at least in the past, that it wasn't worth the cost to have Baker Tilly come and do that presentation again. Same with Ellers. The committee discusses debt review and things like that. Again, that could happen at the finance committee, but Ellers generally gives us a very reasonable fee or no fee to come to one meeting. If we need them to come to two, I doubt they would do that. So some of these things in the committee, it says the committee does. And just like a lot of, you know, a lot of our ordinances, it could be updated that way, but I don't know if that's necessarily a priority or not.
Finance was not really a committee until it was formed, we formed it after Matt was hired. It was just the personnel committee. And we decided that we needed to get to the guts of the budget without line by lining it as a board. So finance goes through it, and the board is willing to, is able to do that as well. But we look for the pitfalls right away, so it's not, I mean, my first year on the board, we were literally here for two days, it was terrible.
Yeah, so the finance committee can provide a summary of their changes and then at the workshop, board members can come with specific changes or things they would want to discuss, you know, instead of, you know, redoing what the finance committee did, essentially.
Right.
Prior to the finance committee coming into existence, the budget process was scary.
It was thoughtful. Terrible. So that's what finance, so we put those two together and the president is, I believe, required to sit on that committee?
Yes.
So, that's what we do, does that answer?
Thank you.
And hopefully the personnel part of it, it won't be that big deal anymore, we have all the people.
Matt wants more people. My only comment, I guess my name's on there, so I'll just throw it out. My only comment with finance personnel is that I think I understand your look for some fresh ideas. I'm disappointed, honestly, in only making $15,000 off of $3 million. Those are reports that Ellers said that come out every month. I don't know, finance committee doesn't get to meet every month, but maybe that's a growing pain from beginning those investments and that type of stuff. And, you know, with you sitting on it, you know, my hopes they would meet regularly or, you know, with fresh eyes with the new, was that trustee a new trustee, or resident, was that a new?
Todd, yeah.
That was a new, so.
Yeah, we'll be looking into Ellers, that's the first thing on my agenda.
It's in my, you know, comments, that's, there's a lot of, finance, actually, we can write all the ordinances we want, but the finance drives it. If the money's not there, you can't do anything. It's a real important committee to meet regularly and steer, do we need new cars? How do we pay for new police cars and capital projects? So, I mean, that's really my comment.
All right. So with that, I'm, I'm second to make the motion. The motion to put Jennifer Pickle on finance personnel, remove Alex Jashishin?
Second.
I think he actually got it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. To law enforcement. Again, this time Jen Pickle and Harvey seconded. They ever put back on to law enforcement, so give your speech again for law enforcement.
I think I do a good job on law enforcement. Again, more than one committee is, you know, I like to do the work for the people and I think it's important to do committee work. I have been around, that was my first committee when I first got elected. I've seen Chief Labor is the fifth chief I've seen to break. Gould, acting chief stores.
Yep.
Chris, okay, so he's never, oh, and then Moffitt, Bob? So he's the fifth chief. I think I work well with the committee and I enjoy it. And I'm interested in being a part of the transition from the joint to the village.
I think an important key and part of this is that you guys weren't around and don't really understand or know what happened when we were in a joint contract with the town. It was interesting to say the least. It was very expensive for the village. It was very problematic, and that's what drove us to the decision to go village only. Jennifer has that history, she understands that situation. She knows we never want to go back there, and she understands the pitfalls of that issue. So I have, you know, nothing but the highest respect for her and hope she gets back on it. But that's a critical piece of the puzzle here that may be missing in some people's decisions is that you need to remember that so that that's not a problem. And we don't ever get into that kind of situation again. And I think that's critical to this posting this position.
I don't know if the problem's worth, but I don't think $4.5 million is really settled, but I'll leave it at that, we'll talk about that down the road.
No, you may be wrong.
All right, so any discussion?
I mean, the only thing for me is I've been following it for the past year. It's been something I've been doing a lot of work with.
Yeah, you're staying, don't worry about it. So I'm, I want a motion, Alex Jashishin and Jen Pickle as the trustees for law enforcement?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Lee?
Uh, now that we have everybody.
Excuse me?
Peer court steering?
Oh, I'm sorry, peer court steering is tabled. It'll probably be me, but I'll get a look at that, yep. It'll be till July.
Just if you want to.
Okay, you're double sure, all right, I'll just do that one more. I'm sorry, Lee, you've been bumped.
Would be the first time.
All right, uh, peer steering. Harvey Potter to be the trustee rep for the peer steering court. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Lee?
Tonight, when Ms. Martinson came in, it's always hard sometimes to know if you should speak up or not because there certainly was a disagreement between the village and the county. I think it's resolved, and I think that it's just a matter of now getting, make sure that we're in contact with her so she knows when it's gonna happen. This is longstanding, as you well admit, well understand, and, you know, it's a.
Outside looking in, we, I just think it's wrong. I don't know what the deal is, but let's get it fixed and let's move on. This is insane that a year later we're still dealing with this woman. It's not fair. She's still one of our, you know, citizens of this, of this village town. It's just, get it done. What is that, get it done?
So instead of cutting her off, I mean, I just, again, I just didn't want to get into a big discussion. There's a lot of history to this, and like you say, we just want to get to the project done, so. And other than that, we did discuss the items at the ordinance committee and I gave a report on that, so.
Matt, we'll talk about, John took us thunder away, but Matt, you can talk about yours.
Yes. Thought maybe for this year, maybe worthwhile to go through a process. It wouldn't have to be any additional meeting. We'd just do it slowly over the next handful of meetings to kind of slowly get the budget process going. Certainly not something we have to do, but it may be worthwhile to get some, you know, get some consensus on what projects are a priority and.
Let's make sure whatever meetings are, that vacations start kicking in here. If someone's missing, we'll want to skip that week or something. People get their vacations done, so we're not gonna discuss over some of this seven right here, I guess.
But this is what we did last year?
It's a little bit different, a little improved over the last time. We did this about two years ago, I think. Yeah. That's all I have.
Aaron's not here, so we'll do approval of vouchers.
We should approve the village portion of $1,515,54.
The motion, second, approve the vouchers for $115,800.54. Any other discussion?
I only had one question.
Do it.
Page four at the top, construction purchase of garage, the 70, it's actually 63, 60,000 plus the 13,000. Is that from the, is that paid out of the loan?
I'm sorry.
That's okay, page four at the top. There's 79, it's the 60,000, I think, and the 13,000. That's from the loan, so that's.
It all goes towards the loan.
Okay, so the, okay, that was my question.
It all goes towards the project, I should.
It's towards the project, and that's incorporated in the 115, the village portion.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, we go first, and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any future agenda items? I want the closed session stuff, Larue, whatever we get out there. I want all those on the next agenda.
Yeah, and the, in fact, the reason that it's not tonight is because there's been a development that may change the report, so we will have that on, and I'd be happy to spend some time.
Yeah, I got a phone call today, I'd like to get a little bit more. I'm in the dark. And we can have an update on General Martinson on the two weeks?
No, longer.
An update.
Oh, me.
He should have it scheduled by, in two weeks. Get it scheduled, it better be on the calendar two weeks from tonight, when he's gonna do it upfront.
So we're adding, what, bringing forth the closed session minutes? Is that what it is?
No.
No, the.
No, the Larue Fields case in terms of the status and background for the new members. The reason that I didn't have it on this one is because there's been some developments and I wanted to try to do this as possible.
Okay. And you said you want it on the budget because you got a call?
On the agenda.
On the agenda.
Yeah, I mean, he.
Yeah.
You got a call from who? You're not gonna say?
I can't say, no, I don't have the kind of confidence that I don't want to.
Baker Tilly will be here next Sunday.
You want to put her on the agenda for board discussion, but.
Close session.
For close session.
Well, it was supposed to be on a couple weeks ago, I just wanted to get it on there. We are in the dark, these three of us have no idea what's going on, and I don't care for lawsuits.
I'm just wondering who the call was from, that's all. In the, you know, spirit of openness, I think that should be.
Well, I'll open it at the closed session meeting.
Okay. I will give the full report, and that was my call on this.
That's all.
This was gonna be a long meeting anyway, so I'll make sure that everybody gets that background information, so.
We're done being sued. All right, with that, motion to adjourn?
Second.
Oh, okay, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?